Good morning and welcome to today's New York City Council Joint Hearing for the Committees on General Welfare, Education, and Criminal Justice. At this time, we ask of you silence all cell phones and electronic devices to minimize disruption throughout the hearing. If you have testimony you wish to submit for the record, you may do so via email at testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that is testimony@council.nyc.gov. At any time throughout the hearing, please do not approach today's. We thank you for your cooperation. Chairs, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to today's Education, General Welfare, and Criminal Justice Committee Oversight on Educational Programming in Detention Facilities. I am Rita Joseph, Chair of the Committee on Education. I am joined by my colleagues Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair of the Committee on General Welfare, and Councilmember Rivera, Chair of the Committee on Criminal Justice, whom we will hear from shortly. Thank you to everyone present here today and to those of you who are testifying remotely. I would like to thank New York City Public Schools, the Administration for Children's Services, and the Department of Corrections for being here today to provide testimony and answer Councilmember questions on this critical matter. At today's hearing, we will also hear testimony on introduction number 542 sponsored by Councilmember Mercedes Narcisse, which is a local law to amend the administrative code of the City of New York in relation to requiring the Department of Education, the Administration for Children's Services, and the Department of Corrections to report on educational programming for juvenile delinquents, juvenile offenders, and adolescent offenders. Students who are detained are granted the same educational rights as their peers in traditional setting. It is imperative that we recognize these rights as quality educational programs, play a vital role in shaping the futures of detained students and society at large. In addition, many of these students experience an interruption in learning due to placement, and it is therefore critical that they receive continued and consistent access to educational programming while detained, as well as proper transitional support when they leave to ensure their long-term academic success. Unfortunately, we've received reports that this has not been the case. Classrooms are being turned into jail cells, staffing shortages are causing students to miss class, and emergency lock-ins during school hours are leaving students to complete packets of homework on their own time. As a forever educator and a mom, I'm deeply disheartened by these reports. Our obligation to provide proper educational services and mental health support to students does not end when they enter the justice system. It intensifies. Research shows that quality educational programming that offers students an opportunity for personal growth and skill development while detained can help reverse the school-to-prison pipeline, empowering incarcerated students to break the cycle of crime and redefine their future. At this hearing, the committees are interested in understanding how the administration delivers educational programming students are entitled to under the law, with a particular focus on services provided to students with disabilities. The committees are also interested in learning what efforts are being made to ensure that quality educational programming is implemented on a consistent basis. Finally, the committees would like to understand what metric New York City Public Schools use to determine academic success and how all agencies collaborate to ensure that this success continues after students exit placement. Before turning to Deputy Speaker Ayala and Chair Rivera, I would like to thank the committee staff, as well as my own staff, all of the work they put in for today's hearing. I would like to also acknowledge my colleagues that are present. Councilmember Ung, Councilmember Rivera, Councilmember Hanks, Councilmember De La Rosa, Deputy Speaker Ayala, Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Wessler, Councilmember Hanif, Councilmember Hudson, and Councilmember Carr. Now I will turn to my colleague Deputy Speaker Ayala.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to today's hearing. My name is Diana Ayala, and I am the Deputy Speaker of the New York City Council and the Chair of the General Welfare Committee. Today, our committee is joining the Committee on Education and the Committee on Criminal Justice to hold this oversight hearing on educational programming in juvenile detention facilities. We need to set young people in juvenile detention up for success. However, the opposite is occurring when it comes to educational programs offered to this population. Earlier this year, ACS confirmed that classrooms in its detention centers have been used to separate detainees from each other as a security measure, effectively being repurposed as jail cells. A photo of a young detainee hunched over a school chair with a sheet over his head was published by Gothamis in June 2023. It underscored the ways in which juvenile detention promotes the educational failure of young people in detention. We are also notably seeing significant increases in the average daily population in juvenile detention. From fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23, the average rose from 170 to 233 youth. Today, we are looking to hear about how the respective agencies present present today are promoting the academic success of youth in juvenile detention while also ensuring their safety. I am personally interested in learning about how the agencies are meeting the social, emotional, and mental health needs of these youth. I look forward to hearing from the administration and advocates today and gathering much-needed feedback on this oversight topic. Also, I would like to thank the committee staff for their work in preparing for this hearing. Amenta Killawan, Senior Legislative Counsel, David Romero, Legislative Counsel, Gillian Kays, Legal to Extern, Julia Harramis, Unit Head, Sayamul Hamid, Finance Analyst, Rose Martinez, Assistant Deputy Director, and finally, my Chief of Staff, Elsie Encarnacion. I would now like to turn it over back to my co-chair, Councilmember Joseph.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker Ayala. I'd like to turn it over now to Councilmember Rivera.
Good morning. I'm Councilmember Carleen Rivera. I'm Chair of the Council's Committee on Criminal Justice. I'd like to welcome everyone here and thank Chairs Joseph and Ayala for partnering with me to convene today's oversight hearing on educational programming in detention facilities. On any given day, there are approximately 500 to 550 young adults, 18 to 24 years old, in DOC custody. These young adults are entitled to an education to help them achieve a high school diploma or a high school equivalency diploma. Yet in the 2021 to '22 school year, the most recent school year for which there is complete data, just 20% of the young people in custody ages 18 to 21 enrolled in the Department of Education's East River Academy. The average daily attendance at East River Academy in the 2022 to 2023 school year was 49, up from the pandemic low of 11 in the 2020 to '21 school year, but not quite up to pre-pandemic levels. I expect to hear from our witnesses today on what can be done to boost attendance rates and ensure everyone entitled to attend school knows that they have that right. I'm also concerned about how consistently young adults in DOC custody are able to attend class. Due to the rising level of violence, educational programming is frequently interrupted by alarms and lockdowns, making it impossible for students to learn. We have also heard that a lack of escorts causes students to arrive late or even miss school entirely. These issues are even worse in restrictive housing units. Education is a critical key to rehabilitation and successful reentry for young adults. Today, I look forward to hearing from the department about the ways in which its policies, practices, and programs support the goal of ensuring young adults in the city's care and custody have an adequate education. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it back over to Chair Joseph.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. Before we swear in administration, we will also hear from Councilmember Narcisse, the sponsor of introduction 542, to deliver some remarks on her legislation.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, chairs, and thank you for the opportunity. We all know that education is critical for a society to move forward. So I'm so happy and so grateful that you're all here to support us, to help us shape our city. And most importantly, I want to say thank you to our legislative body that helped us to shape our educational system, to make sure that it works for everyone. I thank you all because this is a time that we need to do the right thing by everyone. I thank the committee for convening today to an effort to significantly impact the lives of youth, individuals, that young folks that live in our city. Juvenile children are very important to all of us, that I believe. I always say they're all born gifted and talented if they get the structure needed for them to advance forward. And we have to make sure we create the access to all of them. My proposal bill, intro 542, is not just about enforcing an annual report. It's a call for us to be accountable and to improve the educational opportunities to provide to our youth in our administration for the Children's Services, ACS, and the Department of Corrections, DOC facilities. This report on programs enrollment, available services, and related incident are essential. But they are ultimately about the larger picture, the future we are shaping for this young people who have faced challenges early in their lives. As we delve into this, I ask each of you to see beyond the statistic. Let's recognize these youth as individuals who with potential and promise, deserving our utmost efforts to provide them with the tools needed to succeed for the future. Today's insight are pivotal as they all guide, I mean, as they will guide how we as a city and a community extend our critical effort to support this vulnerable young folks in our city. So I'm counting on you that whatever the ship that we need to take, whatever the improvement that we have to make to make sure our children have a better future. That's all I can say. Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Vilas, Councilmember Narcisse, and Councilmember Abreu. Thank you, Councilmember Narcisse. I would like to remind everyone who wishes to testify today that you must fill out a witness slip, which is located on the desk of the Sergeant at Arms near the front of this room. If you wish to testify on introduction 542 on the witness slip, please indicate whether you're here to testify in favor or in opposition to the legislation. I also want to point out that we will not be voting on any legislation today to allow as many people as possible to testify. Testimony will be limited to three minutes per person. I will now turn it over to Committee Counsel Nadia Jean-François to administer the oath.
Good morning. I will call on each of you individually for a response. Please raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before these committees and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions? Glenda Esperance? Tanya Threadgill? Sharif Rashid? Nancy Ginsburg? Frances Torres? Stacy King? Thank you so much. You can begin your testimony, and we'll start with New York City Public Schools.
Good morning, Chairs Joseph, Rivera, and Deputy Speaker Ayala, and all the members of the Committees of Education, Criminal Justice, and General Welfare here today. My name is Glenda Esperance, and I'm the proud Superintendent of District 79 Alternative Schools and Programs at New York City Public Schools. I'm joined by Sharif Rashid, one of our principals at Passages Academy, and Tanya Threadgill, Principal of East River Academy, as well as other colleagues from New York City Public Schools, the Administration for Children's Services, and the Department of Corrections. I'm pleased to be here today to discuss our work to provide high-quality educational programming in detention facilities and city jails, and I thank the City Council for your support of our students. As a background, District 79 is a citywide district that is reimagined by design. It is composed of 10 distinct programs serving approximately 50,000 students, operating in about 350 sites across the city. Those range from multi-classroom settings co-located within New York City Public School High Schools on large campuses to individual classrooms inside community-based organizations, as well as other partner agencies. In addition, we have targeted programming to support youth connected to the court system. Many of our students were disconnected from school prior to enrolling in our programs and have unfulfilled educational experiences. D-79 programs are focused on changing this trajectory by empowering our students and equipping them with the knowledge and skills they need to be successful. District 79 includes the following programs: Career and Technical Education at Co-op Tech, Services for Student Parents at Life, Restart Middle School Services for our overage, undercredited middle schoolers, the Judith S.K. High School NYBCs, which provides services for overage, undercredited students working towards earning a high school diploma, Pathways to Graduation, which addresses our under-21 high school equivalency population, our district-level citywide adult education program, which serves over 21. Our learners who are, our student learners who are serving superintendent suspension receive servicing through our alternative learning centers. We have a Restart Academy serving our treatment population, and then Passages Academy, as well as East River Academy, serving our youth justice and detention population. Each program is tailored to provide a distinct pathway to graduation focused on improving social, emotional, as well as academic outcomes. Our district priority is to provide targeted support addressing the individual needs of our students to help them earn a high school diploma, high school equivalency, and/or CTE certification. It's to build the skills necessary to succeed in post-secondary opportunities, including college and career, and is to provide supports and interventions that help students gain the social, emotional skills necessary to be confident and productive members of our society. As the leader of District 79, I endeavor each day to ensure that enriched opportunities become the standard for all, regardless of zip code, classification, or demographics. I am a proud product of New York City. I was born and raised in Brooklyn to immigrant parents, and I attended public schools. I come to this work with 40 years of experience in public education as a student, special education teacher, adult education teacher, literacy coach, assistant principal, principal, director of school quality, director of special education, and now superintendent. My roles have given me the opportunity, I'm sorry, my goals have given me an essential grounding and insight into the challenges of teaching and learning across various educational settings. My broad and intense knowledge of academic and social, emotional learning inspires me to find ways to navigate the barriers that our students face in detention centers. Providing high-profile instruction to detained and incarcerated youth is both a legal and moral obligation that we continue to invest in and work hard to improve. D-79 is committed to empowering and helping students earn gateway credentials towards college and career opportunities. We collaborate consistently with other city agencies to provide students with instruction and supports on a daily basis. To this end, D-79 operates two schools: Passages Academy in partnership with ACS and East River Academy in partnerships in DOC. In each one of these settings, we have leaders who come with a wealth of over 25 years of academic success. In East River Academy, our program is led by Principal Tanya Threadgill, who was, who has served as a teacher, site coordinator, assistant principal, special education teacher, and now principal, as well as a hometown hero. In our Passages Academy, we have Principal Rashid, who has served as a teacher, site supervisor, assistant principal, school psychologist, and he has led the work as well. D-79 provides detained students with access to the same courses and many similar extracurricular activities as their peers in traditional schools. We understand that the traditional model doesn't work in detention facilities. Therefore, we offer students flexibility to ensure successful outcomes in this setting. Assigning assistant, I'm saying, assigning principals, assistant principals, state-certified teachers, guidance counselors, social workers, and psychologists to provide academic and social, emotional support to young people and adults in education. I'm sorry, in detention. Passages Academy. So Passages Academy provides educational instruction, counseling, and transition services to youth in detention and in close-to-home placement. Each Passages Academy site is designed to meet the needs of the students attending the designated location. In addition, each site collaborates with partner agencies to ensure a safe and meaningful learning environment for students and staff. Passages Academy operates across seven locations, serving youth in secured detention, non-secured detention, limited secure placement, and non-secure placement. Youth in non-secure settings travel to community-based Passages Academy sites to attend school daily, while youth in secure facilities attend facility-based Passage Academy school programs. All Passages Academy sites provide a full day of classes with licensed subject area and special education teachers, counselors, and school leaders to meet the educational needs of these students. The coursework provided is aligned to state instructional standards and at the high school level provides college-ready support systems and follows the New York State High School graduation requirements. Teachers are held to the same standards as their colleagues in other districts. Our class sizes are small and personalized as part of our continued efforts towards knowing students well so that we may better meet students' individual academic and social, emotional needs. While attendance at Passages Academy is compulsory, detainees attend Passages for a limited time based on their individual experience in the court system. Only a small portion of Passages students have made enough progress to meet graduation requirements upon program admission because fewer than 10% are in 12th grade. In addition, only a small number of our Passages students are enrolled long enough to have the opportunity to earn a high school diploma or to pass the GED test while attending the program. Still, we provide our students with access to a wide range of academic classes, and the high school students are able to earn high school credits and take regent exams to ensure minimal disruption to their education. Parents are, of course, key partners in this work. Like district schools, Passages has two full-time coordinate, two full-time parent coordinators and one full-time family and community engagement liaison. There are regular family days and parent-teacher conferences. Unlike other jurisdictions, in New York State, students at Passages Academy remain a part of the New York City school system and have the automatic right to return to their home school upon release. Therefore, when students transition out of Passages Academy, they can remain with the same school district that already knows them. Our student transitions begin upon arrival to the detention center to ensure our students are prepared for and supported upon their exit from detention. Last year, at Passages Academy, we hired a transition administrator to ensure consistent supervision overseeing the social workers and guidance counselors whose primary responsibility centered on supporting young people and adults when they are released. I would like, I would now like to turn to East River Academy, also known as ERA, which is a program operated by New York City Public Schools in partnership with the Department of Corrections. East River Academy is overseen by one principal. It has an educational team composed of assistant principals, certified general and special education teachers, counselors, and support staff. It offers educational services to students between the ages of 18 and 21 who are detained on Rikers Island. Because everyone at Rikers Island is 18 years or older and beyond compulsory school age, educational services are not mandatory and provided only to those between 18 and 21 who opt in. To help improve student outcomes, we partner with the DOC to develop a system to identify the educational needs of each young person upon admission as part of their orientation and to have their educational goals and needs factored into their housing placement. All persons between age 18 to 21 are offered the opportunity to enroll in East River Academy to pursue either a high school or a high school equivalency pathway, depending on their age, accumulated credits, accumulated credits, and preference. We also collaborate with the DOC to present incarcerated individuals with individualized opportunities that include math, science, ELA, which is English Language Arts, social studies, enrichment courses, and certification courses. If students come in with an IEP, also known as an individualized education program, they still receive their special education services. Similar to Passages, a small student-to-teacher ratio ensures a more personalized approach. The goal is to give them as many tools as possible so when they transition out of incarceration, they're ready to take care of themselves and grow. To further prepare those student, those ready for college, East River Academy works hand-in-hand with CUNY, and last year, we worked with the Borough of Manhattan Community College. Through the program IMPACT, VMCC students in the justice system are provided with mentorship, emergency funding, and support for the college registration process. If they have a diploma, they go right to a CUNY school to take care, I'm sorry, to take classes towards a college degree, and it's a completely free program. East River Academy staff also engages in family support in a number of ways. The school holds parent-teacher conferences regularly, just as other DOE schools do, and engages our family, I'm sorry, and engages our families through virtual meetings and family connection letters, newsletters. Similar to Passages, East River Academy also focuses heavily on transition planning. As a result, ERA students are provided with a seamless transition into a range of different educational programs while remaining part of a district that they are familiar with, I'm sorry, with, and is familiar with them. At our recent graduation, the keynote speaker stated, and I quote, "Unfortunately, we come from neighborhoods where the mentality that most of the young men live with is a survival mindset. But the problem with living in survival mode is that it's hard to see a future for yourself." Our keynote speaker spent 11 months on Rikers Island, where he enrolled in East River Academy. After earning his GED from East River Academy, he pursued a degree in sociology and African-American Studies at Columbia University, founded the Justice Ambassador's Youth Council at Columbia's University Center for Justice in 2019, and in 2021, became a Truman Scholar at Columbia University School of General Studies. He also said earning a college degree was the biggest predictor towards a stable, healthy, and productive life after incarceration. He shared the following closing statement to the graduates: "Proper preparation prevents poor performance. You will need a solid plan to follow as a guide. Don't leave anything to chance. Don't leave here with the same mentality you had when you came in. Don't leave here without knowing what you want to do with your life. That vision is what we aspire for all our students in East River Academy." I would also like to share some of the new and expanded initiatives that we plan on taking on to ensure that high-quality education continues at both of these facilities. I would be remiss if I didn't address the fact that our entire city battled through a pandemic, which took a toll on all of us. The interrupted instruction caused by COVID-19 tried a glaring light on the need for our programs to continue prioritizing high-quality academic instruction and emotional support for students and staff. That experience led us to launch new initiatives and expand work on existing priorities. Those include increasing instructional programming to nurture the needs of the whole child, or whole student, including enrichment and social, emotional learning programs, also strengthening our partnerships with District 75, as well as New York City Public School Special Education Central Offices to facilitate professional learning to all teachers in detention centers with an emphasis on de-escalation, relationship building, and specially-designed instruction for pedagogues. And finally, creating a student steering committee that meets regularly because we want to ensure the inclusion of student voice in all our decision-making. Now let me briefly turn to the proposed legislation, intro number 542, which requires reporting on educational programming for juvenile delinquents, juvenile offenders, and adolescent offenders. We support the goals of this bill and look forward to working with the council to ensure that the reporting requirements align with our that the reporting requirements align with our current programming models and practices. We are committed to ensuring that New York City students have access to high-quality education in all settings. Our city has a distinct unified district dedicated not only to supporting the education of our students in detention and jail, but also designed to promote smoother and more thoughtful pathways to high schools, transitional programs, and continuing education upon reentry. We greatly appreciate our existing partnerships with Chair Joseph and Councilmember Narcisse. We know we have more work to do, and we look forward to our continued partnership with the City Council in order to enhance the educational experience of students in detention. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Menon, Councilmember Lewis, and Councilmember Stevens.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Ginsburg, and I am the Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Youth and Family Justice at the Administration for Children's Services. I would like to thank Deputy Speaker Ayala, Chair Joseph, Chair Rivera, and the members of the General Welfare, Education, and Criminal Justice Committees for holding today's Oversight Hearing on Educational Programming in Detention Facilities. DYFJ oversees and manages the continuum of services, from prevention for youth in the community to those young people facing charges in family and Supreme Court. Our services include intensive family counseling, alternative-to-detention programs in family court, non-secure and secure detention, and close-to-home placement facilities. With regard to detention, ACS manages two secure detention facilities, Horizon in the Bronx and Crossroads in Brooklyn, and oversees seven non-secure detention facilities operated by our nonprofit partners. Education is essential for the youth across our continuum so that they can reach their full potential. I have spent my career focused on education for court-involved youth, and since coming to ACS, I have prioritized strengthening all that ACS can do to enhance and further the education and educational outcomes for youth generally and youth in detention more specifically. I would like to thank my colleagues at New York City Public Schools for all that they do each and every day to teach and support the students in detention and throughout our continuum. As their testimony explained in more detail, Passages Academy provides the education onsite in our secure detention facilities and at Bronx Hope and Belmont for youth in non-secure detention. The focus of Passages Academy's teachers and leadership on engaging the young people in school and providing them with the knowledge and skills to succeed in life is critical, and I thank them for all that they do. While New York City Public Schools is responsible for education in detention, ACS is responsible for encouraging and escorting youth to school and enhancing educational services by coordinating college courses, tutoring services, and after-school programming and vocational training for youth in detention. ACS and NYCPS have increased our commitment to collaboration to enhance and improve educational outcomes for young people in custody. I will focus my testimony on updating the council on these aspects of our work. In secured detention, all youth who are compulsory school age are required to go to school. Compulsory school age in New York City is the year you turn 17, measured at July 1st of the year. There are many youth in detention who are older than compulsory age and are not legally required to go to school, but we encourage these young people to attend school, be it high school, GED, or college courses. Youth placed in non-secure detention are also required to go to school. Many young people in detention were disconnected from or behind in school prior to entering detention. A key component of our work is engaging or re-engaging youth in education. We have done this by encouraging an environment that embraces and supports education. As a result of this work, secure detention produced a record number of graduates in the last school year. Thirty-four students achieved their graduation goals, seven graduated from middle school, 13 students received a high school diploma, and 14 students completed their GED. A critical component of last year's success was due to the ACS's recruitment of staff members who serve as school liaisons in both secure detention facilities to promote the focus on education. This school-based team is responsible for encouraging young people to attend and participate in school, which significantly improved engagement and attendance across both facilities. Not only did this increase attendance, but it helped to change the culture, building facility-wide enthusiasm in support of education. As the population in secured detention is older and includes more young people ages 18 to 20 who are not compulsory age, we have been increasing opportunities for high school equivalency options and college courses. ACS and NYCPS work collaboratively to adapt classroom spaces into computerized testing spaces, including physically retrofitting this space to allow NYCPS to administer the GED exams. Since this advance, we have seen an increase in the number of young people obtain their GED diplomas. We also offer onsite SAT testing and tutoring and are continually expanding our relationships with college partners and college access organizations that support youth in achieving their educational goals. We are partnering with several community colleges within the CUNY network, including Bronx Community College, Kingsborough Community College, Hunter College, and private institutions including Manhattan College to offer college exploration and credit-bearing options for youth in detention and close to home. This past summer, ACS offered a new course, Juvenile Justice Ethics, in partnership with Manhattan College's E3MC program, which is a multi-partner initiative that offers free college-level courses to those incarcerated and formerly incarcerated in New York City, and three of our students earned college credit in that class. In partnership with Passages Academy, students can access 33 CLEP preparation courses on the Modern States Educational Alliance platform available on NYCPS Chromebooks. Taught by college professors, these asynchronous courses prepare students to pass the CLEP exam in order to earn college credit. In November, future Now Bronx Community College will offer an Introduction to College offerings, followed by a class in the spring of a two-week English preparatory writing workshop to prepare students to help them meet the CUNY proficiency requirement in English, and Manhattan College will offer their three-credit course in May and June at Horizon. In addition, through the Center for Community Alternatives and as part of their programming at Crossroads, Hunter College plans to offer their Introduction to Sociology class in the fall at Crossroads and potentially at Horizon. In the spring, that class was offered in Horizon last year, was extremely popular, and many of our young people earned college credit. Lastly, we continue to collaborate with Passages Academy counselors in planning for College and Career Week in the spring to expose young people to college knowledge and vocational opportunities in the community. It is also critical for us to provide vocational training opportunities for youth in detention. We offer exploration classes in real estate construction and automotive engineering, personal trainer training, entrepreneur and small business training, and barbering as well as OSHA accreditations. This fall, a menu of vocational services will be provided by Bard Prison Initiative at Crossroads and by Children's Village at Horizon. We anticipate that this will provide additional opportunities for engagement for all of our young people, and in particular for those who have graduated or are less academically inclined. Finally, we have also found that students in detention significantly benefit from access to tutoring. In addition to the supports from Passages Academy, students in secure detention receive additional support from tutors. Many of our young people thrive with one-on-one academic supports, which we believe has contributed to the increase in educational success in detention. Through funding from the Youth Men's Initiative with an ACS supplement, ACS was able to expand tutoring services from six to 29 tutors last year, providing over 10,000 tutoring sessions up from 4,000 the prior year. Until this year, tutoring services were provided by Success for Life, and this year Bard Prison Initiative and Children's Village have assumed responsibility for tutoring. Additionally, coaching will be added to the menu of these services. Addressing Intro 542 of 2022, which would require ACS and other agencies to report on educational programming data for juvenile delinquents, juvenile offenders, and adolescent offenders, ACS appreciates the council's interest in the educational programming provided in secured detention and the impact it has had on youth in our care. We look forward to discussing this bill in more detail. In conclusion, I would like to take a moment to thank all of my colleagues who work in the detention facilities, including the YDS, case managers, program counselors, and school liaisons, as well as the NYCPS teachers and District 79 administration, for all that they do every day to support, care, and educate our youth in detention. The commitment to their success does not go unnoticed by myself, the young people in care, or their families. And I finally want to once again thank the council for your interest and commitment in ensuring that young people in detention are able to achieve their fullest potential.
Good morning, Chairs Rivera, Ayala, and Joseph, and members of the Committees on Criminal Justice, General Welfare, and Education. I am Frances Torres, Deputy Commissioner of the Division of Programs and Community Partnerships. I thank all for this opportunity to discuss how the New York City Department of Corrections supports individuals in achieving academic success while in our care. Access to education is proven to reduce recidivism and improve outcomes. We make every effort to encourage those in our care, especially all 18 through 21-year-olds, to participate in the array of educational services available to them because it is their right. I am joined today by Assistant Commissioner Stacy King, whom early this year fully staffed our Educational Services Unit, who support these efforts with one program manager and three education specialists. Our staff meet with all 18 through 21-year-olds who are admitted to the department's custody to inform them of their right to access educational services provided by the New York City Public Schools. We ensure NYCPS has dedicated spaces throughout our facilities. We carefully identify, select, train, and assign uniform members to support NYCPS's daily operation, including escorts to and from school. Over the years, our partnership has resulted in the rollout of an annual congregate graduation ceremony, the integration of technology within the school sites at Rikers Island, and a memorandum of understanding to afford career and technical education. Recognizing that peer engagement and support can be a critical motivator for this age group, which we refer to as emerging adults, the department has developed dedicated school housing areas at the Robert and Davron Center, RNDC, for those that are interested in attending school to ensure they live with like-minded peers who are focused on academic achievement. Individuals living in these housing areas are expected to attend school daily and are provided with school uniforms and specialized incentives to create a sense of normalcy and maintain peer-supported motivation for success. In addition to the school housing units at RNDC, we opened an emerging adult program housed at the Rose M. Singer Center to similarly support individuals in that facility who are interested in attending school. This innovative approach, as well as the engagement efforts of our educational services staff, have contributed to increased enrollment and better outcomes for our emerging adults. Due to the success of this initiative, we continue to plan to open dedicated schoolhouses to meet growing demand so that our young adults have every opportunity for success. As an agency, we have also been very focused on leveraging technology to improve operations and expand opportunities. We have been diligently working on the computerization of the GED exam at our school sites so that students can take the exam online and receive their scores in minutes. The first computerized GED exam was offered at RNDC last year, and we since expanded testing to Rose M. Singer and the George R. Vierno Center, with plans to open another site at the Otis Bantam Correctional Center in the near future. We also offer the K Lite application on the tablets issued to persons in custody, which affords educational content including math, science, economics and finance, arts and humanities, computing, SAT prep, partner content, college careers, and more. Finally, we recognize that learning does not only take a place in a classroom and is not reserved solely for young people. We proudly partner with Columbia University, Manhattan College, and most recently LaGuardia Community College to offer credit-bearing courses in different interest areas. Students who complete their course are admitted to the institution to continue their pursuit of a college degree upon release. Our partnerships with colleges and universities have allowed 233 individuals to earn three college credits each while in our care. To celebrate this achievement, the end of each semester is marked by a ceremony which includes the student's family members. Through our partnership with NYCPS and community-based providers, we offer a robust menu of workforce development programs, including certificate and certification courses. Certificate courses offer introductory, hands-on vocational training for in-demand trades, including cosmetology, carpentry, culinary arts, welding, driving, and barbering. Since the beginning of this administration, we have had over 1,800 enrollments and over 1,600 completions. In fiscal year 2024 alone, there have been 122 enrollments in certificate courses and 122 successful completions. Certifications are credentials that verify legitimacy and competency to meet certain criteria and perform a job, and include various OSHA training courses, flagging, scaffolding, and CPR first aid. From January 2022 to present, we have had nearly 5,000 enrollments and over 4,500 certifications earned. So far this fiscal year, there have been 58 enrollments in certification courses and 58 certifications earned. Workforce development courses are afforded primarily in dedicated classrooms within the schools or at any of our programming centers. The PIS, meaning the Acronym Programs Education and Community Engagement Center located at RNDC, consists of dedicated spaces to conduct automotive, carpentry, digital literacy - driving simulation, welding, and other courses. It also includes amenities such as a film screening room, engineering and music studio, and a video and tabletop games. In November two thousand twenty-two, the department opened its Beacon, acronym stands for Building, Educating, Advancing, and Creating Opportunities for Networking, Center at GRVC, to afford similar opportunities to individuals housed within the facility. Individuals who participate in workforce development programs while in the jails are connected to community-based workforce programs to continue training and exploring opportunities made available through our partners post-release. We are grateful for the many strong partnerships with NYCPS, colleges, universities, and
Thank you for joining us.
community-based organizations that create opportunities for continued growth for those
Council Chair Rivera, you may go.
All right, good morning.
in our custody and those reintegrating into our communities after release.
Thank you so much for your testimony.
I am available to answer any questions you may have.
I want to thank all of the committed educators and people involved in programming who do
Thank you.
Lincoln?
this work every day. I know when I visited Rikers multiple times and I have met educators, I remember one specifically who said that she had been there for decades, a very, very long time. And thank you for the details on all of the partnerships, the Intro to College courses, CUNY Manhattan College, Pathways Program, Career and Tech Programs. So I want to just drill down on the numbers, and I want to thank the chairs for being so gracious in allowing me to ask these questions. How many people in custody are currently receiving educational programming from DOE?
Chair Rivera, can you repeat the question just a little louder? Thank you.
Can you repeat it?
Absolutely. How many people in custody are currently receiving educational programming from DOE? And how does DOC inform students of their eligibility for educational services?
Thank you for that question. I want to allow Principal Thredgill to give that data. Thank you.
Good morning. Currently at East River Academy, the active enrollment is two hundred and one students. I will defer to the DOC in terms of how they notify students about the services.
Good morning, Chair Rivera. Thank you so much for that question. All eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds receive an educational orientation of an intake. During that orientation, individuals are informed they have the right to educational services through NYCPS.
How do they decline those services, and does DOC follow up on refusals?
Thank you again for the question. When our staff members are conducting those orientations, any eighteen to twenty-one-year-old is afforded Form 3503B, which is a request to educational services. At that time, keeping in mind that they are eighteen to twenty-one and they can opt for educational services, they either accept or reject or do not accept the service. All of those forms are delivered to the Department of Education. Do know that any eighteen to twenty-one-year-old who originally refuses or initially refuses during intake has every right to change his or her mind during their detention period, at which point they can complete another 3503 form, can notify any of our counseling staff, as well as housing area officers, in order for them to be produced to the school floor.
So how does DOC track people who have requested to enroll in school? And how does it ensure that people who have made such a request are enrolled within ten days of that request? I think that is what is required by DOC Directive 3503.
That's a great question, Chair Rivera. If you can allow me to take you through the process in order to make it succinct and clear.
And if you could explain DOE's role in that enrollment process as concisely as possible? I would really appreciate it.
Sure. When it comes to any eighteen to twenty-one, they complete that form. They actually, in completing that form during the new admission process, if they accept educational services, the DOC makes every effort to ensure that once the new admissions process is cleared and the emergent adult is assigned to a housing area, that we flag it internally for our custody management division to assign that emergent adult to one of our schoolhouses at RNDC. Know that the process that we've developed with our partners at NYCPS is that, once we give that request form to them, they also have access to what we call an internal report that captures any new admissions eighteen to twenty-one-year-olds that allows them to go and develop what is called a cooldown list. When they issue to us that cooldown list, it reflects based on housing areas, the kids that we're supposed to produce to school on a daily basis.
Thank you. So we have heard that DOC is using program houses, I think you mentioned this in your testimony, to facilitate access to school in RNDC. Similarly, at the July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-three BOC meeting, DOC announced that they established an education house at AMKC where individuals who express an interest in educational services live together, and DOE instructors come to the housing unit, eliminating the need for escorts. Does someone need to be placed in a program house to access education?
Once again, thank you, Chair Rivera. The initiative you described in the question, I just, for transparency, that initiative is now transitioned to OBCC because we consolidated AMKC. In establishing the housing area at OBCC, we are currently in conversations with the DOE to restart that service because we do have that program house right now established at OBCC. Can you repeat your second portion to your question, please?
Sure. Does someone need to be placed in a program house to access education?
No, ma'am, no, Chair. Anyone who is assigned to a school or a program house, in essence, allows us the opportunity to have a share gold of the population, facilitating the access to and from school. But they don't have to be in a program house or schoolhouse to have access to educational services.
The council has repeatedly heard that individuals cannot participate in school or they arrive late due to a dearth of escorts. How are you addressing this, and is there a staffing shortage for this role?
Thank you, Councilmember, for that, I mean Chair Rivera, for that. Let's just be open about this response. We have created schoolhouses and program houses in an effort to ensure that we rely heavily on the school staff that we have assigned, meaning officers. I will not be in front of the council and say that we don't experience challenges, because we do continue challenges with staffing and escorts. Know that there are delays that are common within our environment. Some of those could result as a lack of escort in the housing area. They could also be because of any safety reasons when we are doing school production from the housing area into the school. What we have done in recent times is we have increased the number of officers assigned to the main school floor at RNDC. We currently have increased from five to nine. In doing a revision of classroom space within the main school at RNDC, and anticipating opening additional classroom space at RNDC on the main school floor, we are anticipating adding two more officers to the team that does school production on a daily basis.
So there are challenges, I believe is what you're saying. And you mentioned RNDC a couple times. I want to ask specifically about this facility. Last year, the Board of Corrections issued a report on lockdowns that found that emergency lock-ins were disproportionately concentrated in two facilities, and one of them was RNDC. According to the report in September of last year, right at the beginning of the school year, RNDC was locked down sixty-four times, and most of the reported lock-ins that month occurred between seven a.m. and three, the period in which educational services are provided. So what does the department attribute this increase in emergency lock-ins at the beginning of last year? Just, you know, the BOC report notes that in September, when this spike occurred, the RNDC had seen decreases in fights, use of force, and slashing. But I do want to ask, what was the reason for that spike? Are there any facilities on lockdown right now? And when you are on lockdown, can you just confirm that you cannot access educational services?
I'm really glad you asked that question. When we talk about lockdowns, we actually, as a department, resort to a lockdown only when there are intense security concerns for the safety of those assigned to our care, as well as our staff. When it comes to lockdowns, what I should share with you, Chair, is that when it comes to cancellations of educational services, the commissioner has made it very clear that educational services, access to and from school, will continue during those lockdowns. We've had lockdowns this week at very specific facilities for security reasons, and with the exception of yesterday, when we had a delay of access to the school area, we still have gained or we still have produced students to the school floor.
So we've been informed that RNDC, the facility on Rikers Island that houses the majority of young adults, had been on lockdown since Sunday. Can you explain the rationale for this lengthy lockdown and whether it's been lifted as of today?
Thanks again, Chair. I want to just be very careful on how I provide you with this response, only because I am not the Deputy Commissioner for Security or Custody Management, and I do not want to misspeak on behalf of any of my peers. I do share with you that in recent months, significantly throughout the summer, we have actually done an increase in the number of emergent adults who are assigned to any of our housing areas at RNDC, allowing us to take a census from fifteen in each housing area to twenty-five emergent adults in each housing area. Knowing that when we merge kids, they are apprehensive, they are concerned, knowing that we need to create a balance on the SRGs or gangs that we have, so that they are balanced and we don't continue to have them be violent against one another. We know that for those reasons, there has been tension between our young adults, having an impact and an increase on our incidence at RNDC, which have indeed had to resort onto that lockdown.
From what we know, for example, GRVC, RNDC, they're two facilities where the department has blended security risk groups or opposing gangs in the housing areas pursuant to its Nunez action plan. Are there ever instances where DOC refuses to allow an individual to attend school based on an individual's security determination?
No, ma'am, not when it comes to that. We actually blend the housing areas, as you have recapped. When it comes to access to educational services through one of our directives in partnership with the Department of Education, we actually restrict or deny services or access to school for a temporary period of time. When it comes to any emergent adult who has been engaged in a violent act against a peer or staff, we actually take the necessary measures to transfer that person to a different location to ensure the safety of the rest of the jail or command.
You said no to refusing that person's access, but then you said you temporarily suspend it. Can you explain that one more time?
So, yeah, sure. So under Directive 3503, in consultation with the Department of Education, we are able to do a restriction or denial of access to school to any emergent adult who has committed either violent behavior in the housing area that poses a security concern as he or she travels through the command, or has had a negative or violent interaction while at school.
Okay. So, thank you for that. I know that chairs are waiting to ask questions, and I just want to thank you for answering the questions. I know there will be many more from my colleagues. And I just want to note that, you know, earlier in testimony, it was mentioned about that keynote speaker and some of the comments they had made about survival mode, that doesn't allow you to envision the future, and this person is now a Truman scholar, which is really a very inspiring story, and I'm thankful that you brought it to our attention. And we've been told that for students that are actually able to attend school on Rikers Island, many find it an enriching and rewarding experience. So I just want to ask, how does DOE attract and retain good educators to teach at the East River Academy? And so that'll be my last question, and I just want to thank the chairs again for allowing me to go first.
Good morning again. Thank you for that question. So with regards to attracting high-quality talent at East River Academy, it's as rigorous as if it was for any district in the city. We definitely make sure that all the staff that comes in are licensed and credentialed to those content areas, as well as the one thing that we are really proud of is our retention rate is very high. The average stay for our teachers
or has had a negative or violent interaction while at school.
Okay. So, thank you for that. I know that Chairs are waiting to ask questions, and I just want to thank you for answering the questions. I know there will be many more from my colleagues. And I just want to note that, you know, earlier in testimony, it was mentioned about that keynote speaker and some of the comments they had made about survival mode, that that doesn't allow you to envision the future. And this person is now a Truman Scholar, which is really a very inspiring story. And I'm thankful that you brought it to our attention. And we've been told that for students that are actually able to attend school on Rikers Island, many find it an enriching and rewarding experience. So I just want to ask, how does DOE attract and retain good educators to teach at the East River Academy? And so that'll be my last question, and I just want to thank the Chairs again for allowing me to go first.
Good morning again. Thank you for that question. So with regards to attracting high-quality talent at East River Academy, it's as rigorous as if it was for any district in the city. We definitely make sure that all our, the staff that comes in are licensed and credentialed to those content areas. As well as the one thing that we are really proud of is our retention rate is very high. The average stay for our teachers who are part of East River Academy are 15 years, and so we don't have a retention issue. And then what we also do on a continuous basis is provide professional development to build their capacity. And professional development dealing with ensuring that they have the skills and the capacity to teach a wide range of students, no matter what level they come in at. Because as we do know, the students that we receive are probably once disengaged, and we want to make sure that students who are coming to us maybe at age 15, 16, or 17 as non-readers, that they have successful outcomes. So we empower them and we provide professional development with regards to differentiated instruction as well as TCIS, which deals with trauma-informed instruction so that we are always in a space of de-escalating situations and that we create nurturing environment. And that is the protocol for all the staff that we hire.
Thank you. Thanks again for your testimony and for being here, for your commitment to education. And I'll turn it back to Chair, the Chairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Rivera. Councilmember Wrestler?
Great. Sorry, multitasking? Apologies to Mira, but thank you to Chair Joseph, Chair Ayala, Chair Rivera. I'm gonna ask my questions today of ACS. So thank you, is it Associate Commissioner? Deputy Commissioner, sorry, I didn't mean to demote you. Deputy Commissioner Ginsburg for your work. I think the ACS team is trying, but I am deeply concerned about what's happening at Crossroads and Horizons. I had the privilege of joining my friend and colleague, Councilmember Stevens, on a recent tour. I think you were on vacation, very well deserved. But I just would like to ask for brevity in answers so that Chair Joseph or Teacher Joseph doesn't get upset with me. So firstly, the current census today at Crossroads and Horizons? 231. So we've seen essentially a doubling of the census at Crossroads and Horizons, a doubling of the number of kids in jail over the past two years, a phenomenal increase that is profoundly disturbing. Of the 231 kids at Crossroads and Horizon, whatever the most recent data point you can share, yesterday, today, last week, how many kids attended school?
I'm sorry, New York City Public Schools takes attendance, so...
Okay, just the numbers, please.
Yes. At Crossroads and Horizon, we have 235 students. So we had 80% attendance rate at those both schools.
When?
I'm sorry.
I just, a date, point in time, date, attendance?
So our attendance rate for the 2022-2023 school year was the 80% attendance rate, is what he was sharing.
Well, we've been getting significant reports from providers and advocates that young people, that we don't have enough staff onsite to split up groups when one or two kids is refusing to attend, then entire groups are staying in their dormitories for the entire day. It's profoundly concerning. I'm also concerned about the non-compulsory population. And we've seen a significant growth in this population, as I understand it. How many youth are currently classified as non-compulsory?
We currently have 59% of our students are non-compulsory.
Got it. So when you said 82% attendance rate is of the compulsory students, is that correct? Just yes or no?
No.
82% attendance rate of the 235 young people that are, the kids that are in jail right now, 82% of those kids?
I want to just clarify. The 82% that we quoted was from last year, the fiscal year of 2022-2023.
Okay.
For this year-to-date attendance, we don't have that information right now.
Sure.
So I just want to...
So the 59% non-compulsory data point was from?
So the 59% non-compulsory rate, just give me one second so we can go into the...
And you can submit that to us at a later time. Thank you.
That's also for last year as well, for the 22-2023.
And the 82% attendance rate does or does not include the non-compulsory students?
That's included.
That's inclusive, yeah.
Our students that come to us, they come to us by hall. That is a mix between compulsory and non-compulsory, so they're not separated.
We're concerned about the lack of attendance among non-compulsory students and want to better understand what options are being made available for them. In particular, are we offering vocational training, potentially GED programming or other solutions, hard skills training, to engage these young people more productively? And I'd just love to ask Ms. Ginsburg that, if you don't mind. Deputy Commissioner, excuse me.
Sure. So let me explain what it looks like, because maybe that will make it more clear. We do not have entire halls not attending school. That is not occurring. So every morning, the school liaison teams, who are made up of YDS officers, go to each hall and prepare with the YDS who are assigned to the halls, prepare the young people to go to school. So every day, there are young people from every hall going to school. Some young people, there are usually somewhere between 15 and 20 young people in each facility who have court appearances. So they go to court, they do not attend school. We have many, many young people who are coming to class each day who are GED students, who are non-compulsory, and they are participating in classes with the compulsory school-age young people.
Okay.
But as far as the vocational question that you asked, we recently awarded the RFP for Vocational Programming to Bard Prison Initiative in Brooklyn and to Children's Village in Horizon. They will be subcontracting with community-based providers. That programming will start in November, so there will be vocational, a full vocational menu for those young people.
And how many full-time staff do you have focused on reentry work at ACS?
Reentry to the community? We do not have anyone full-time at this point.
Okay. I just, to me, we have, and I apologize, but I just, in summation, to see a doubling of the number of kids, minors, in jail in New York City in a two-year period under this mayor's tenure is profoundly disturbing. And we have to do everything in our power to reduce the, to close the front door and reduce the number of kids who are unnecessarily ending up in jail. We need to speed up the time that they're in there and help get them out. And we need to always be focusing on reentry because most of our young people are coming right back to our communities. And so it's not just about imparting the skills and the training and the education and the, all of the emotional supports that they need. It's about focusing on what reentry looks like and when people get home. And so I am very concerned about the trends of increased incarceration and how we can do better to support these young people. But frankly, we need to do everything we can to reduce the number and reduce it aggressively.
So I will say I agree with you, and I am a trend believer in strong reentry, but your characterization of the young people who are in our custody is not entirely accurate. Over 75% of our young people who are with us are facing top charges of attempted murder or murder. Many of them are facing significant state sentences. 98, 99% of our young people are being prosecuted in the adult court system. Almost our entire population are young people who would have been on Rikers Island before Raise the Age. And because of the way Raise the Age is written, they are facing adult sentences and will not be reentering to the community immediately upon exit from our facilities.
But will be reentering eventually. And the need for investment in ATIs and ATDs to close that front door, the need to invest in population review teams to speed people up and get people out are urgently needed. And I have to say, this increase in the number of kids who we are incarcerating is deeply concerning. And I have respect for Commissioner Danhauser and for you and the work that you all are trying to do, but I feel that the policies of this administration are moving us in this direction. And so my critique and my criticism falls at the mayor's doorstep and the NYPD's doorstep, that we are sending more kids to jail. That is a problem. That is disgraceful. And I realize you're trying to do the best you can with a difficult situation, but we need to say that as plainly as humanly possible. Thank you. Thank you, Chair Joseph. Thank you, Chair Ayala. Thank you, Chair Rivera.
Thank you, Councilmember Wrestler. Good morning. So at the East River Academy, which serves students 18 to 21 on Rikers, as well as Passage Academy, serving students as Crossroads and Horizon secure detention facilities operated by ACS. What is the social workers-to-student ratio on a daily basis?
Thank you for that question. We have that data.
Thank you for that question. Currently, there are four social workers employed at East River Academy. In addition to that, we have three guidance counselors.
What percentage are showing up every day?
Percentage of students?
No, staff.
Staff? I don't have that information in terms of percentage of staff showing up to work, but the attendance has been good this school year.
And I'll follow up with that question for you to send me the answers. How many unfulfilled positions are there?
I'm just gonna, do you mind if I just pause? Because that was the information for East River Academy. Do you want the number of social workers for Pathways, Passages as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you for that question. We have seven social workers and two guidance counselors for Crossroads and Horizon.
And how many guidance counselors do you have?
Two guidance counselors, one at Crossroads and one at Horizon.
And have they been showing up to service the children?
Yes, consistently.
Consistently?
Yes.
Okay. How many unfulfilled positions are there?
At this time, we are at, I want to say we have a couple, and this is just in combination with East River Academy as well as Passages. We have a couple of vacancies due to retirement. Like I said, many of our teachers have been here for a long time, but they're minimal. Not anything that's extreme to any other district or school across the city.
Do you have a number for that?
I can see if we have a number on hand. Currently at East River Academy, we have two math, one reading specialist, and two CTE. That's a vacancy, and at Passages, it's four.
With the pegs being announced, do you expect the pegs to impact the ratio?
Thank you for that question. Just give me one second. So I just want to say, we're pretty much in the beginning process of identifying potential savings with OMB and City Hall, so no decisions have been made at this time. And I just want to just reiterate, as mentioned, and you'll hear it time and time again, our goal is to minimize the impact on any services possible.
Okay. What is the student-to-teacher-to-student ratio?
So what I'll do is I'll have each principal respectively give their program?
Yeah, for Passage and East Academy.
Okay, so this is for Passages? Well, I'll start off with East River Academy.
Thank you for that question. Currently, there are 26 teachers on staff at East River Academy, active students 201, and the ratio is eight teachers, one student.
Eight teachers, one student?
Yeah. So just to, really just kind of raise that awareness, with regards to our class sizes, they're really small, like with regards to maybe eight to one. They won't max any more than 15 students. But the ratio right now is between eight to one at East River Academy and then at Passages?
Yes, we have 72 teachers. Ratio is one to 10.
One to 10. Do you have any unfulfilled positions over at East River and Passage? In terms of teachers?
So with, in terms of unfulfilled positions with regards to East River Academy, it's two math teachers, one reading specialist, and two CTE. And then with regards to Passages, it's one English, two history teachers, and one art teacher.
Are you talking about all the facilities or just these two facilities? Because you operate so many.
So we're talking about, so when we look at vacancies, we look at it overall as each program because we can move teachers around to different facilities within the program that falls underneath, based on need. So that's just overall. That's what the vacancies are.
Okay, okay. What is the total enrollment? I know you said it, but can you say it again for me?
Okay, so the total enrollment for Passages?
Yes, so all court-involved youth are enrolled into Passages Academy. So throughout all, we have a total enrollment of 730, but specific to our detention sites, it's 235.
Okay, based on, can you identify gender, ethnicity, race, disability status, or ENL status?
Okay, so what will, do you want us to just give you all the information for Passages and then give you the same information for East River Academy?
Correct.
Is that easier? Okay. So the demographics are as follows?
Yes. Demographics for Passages Academy as a whole is 8% female, 92% male, 65% African-American, 29% Latino, 3% white. Special education classified is 58%. English-language learners is 6%.
And with East River Academy?
Is this is all of Passages or the secured sites as well?
This is all of Passages.
Thank you for that question. So far, as 22-school, 22-23 school year, we had a total enrollment of 697 students. Currently, those students, 86% were male, 2% were, 14% were female, 2% Asian, 59% black, 35% Latino, 2% white, race, ethnicity, other, 2%. Students with disabilities, 51%, Ls, 6%.
Can I also get the data for the secure facilities as well?
The secure facilities in isolation? Let me see if we have that. I'm not sure if we have that, but we could...
At Passages.
At Passages? Just give me one second. So we can give active enrollment, but we can't go as granular as with the demographics. So if you want active enrollment at the Passages site, the secured setting, with regards to Crossroads, as of today, if we, as of 10-2, I'm sorry, as 10-2-2023, we had 119 students that were actively enrolled, and in Horizon Secure was 116. With regards to East River Academy, active enrollment as of 10-2-2023 was 201. But just please keep in mind that our daily attendance might change because we have students, because our population is transient. We have some students that are there for maybe an hour, two days, three days. Our average day, our average time spent is 45 days.
That was my next question. I'm gonna pass it over to Councilmember Stevens.
Hello, good morning. I didn't know I was up. But just really quickly, and I just feel like I always have to say, especially when we're talking about young people and detention and understanding that everyone does their job as best as they can, but any young person that ends up in these facilities is a failure on our part to prevent this. And I just always just have to say that because the school-to-prison pipeline is real and working in education for a number of years and seeing how we set our young people to end up there is part of the problem. But I just had a couple of questions around workforce development. I know in the opening statement, it was explained, talked about how, you know, they have barbering and entrepreneurship and OSHA certification. Are there other workforce development opportunities for young people while they're in the facility, other than the ones that was mentioned? And if not, why?
Good morning. Good morning. I believe you're posing that question to me because I did have that list in my testimony. Do know that when it comes to the courses, meaning certificates and certifications that we offer at Rikers Island, those are criminal justice-involved, the Department of Labor courses, meaning once they are released and re... courses, meaning once they are released and reintegrated into the community, they have stronger and better opportunities.
No, I understand that, but I'm asking, what are those the only things that are offered? Because even when I went to Horizon, like my colleague mentioned earlier, those were the same ones that were talked about. We saw students, they were... They had like a cafe set up, which was great, and they were learning the different ins and outs of that, and barbering. I know they said they had some music, some music, things like that. But my question is around what else is offered? Because I often find that we'll have like these little niches around what is being offered to our young people, and we're not really preparing them for the workforce. So, you know, and are we seeing that when young people are in these training courses, are they being connected to jobs when they leave the facility? What does the aftercare look like?
That's a great question. Thank you so much. So if you allow me to turn around and take you through the list...
And just because, in terms of time, I just need you to be expeditionist.
I just tell you this, I'll be more than happy to share the list with City Council. I only listed a number of certificates and certifications in my testimony. We do have more than, and we always welcome the feedback, the input of our partners as well as the staff and our young adults and adults to determine what to offer in the next fiscal year. But we do have... We do offer more than what I named or listed in my testimony.
And how often are folks connected to jobs after they leave? Like, is that...
That's a great question. The beauty about having the memorandum of understanding with our partners from public schools is that, number one, we connect the students through them to continue education post-release, and we also have a strong partnership with SEO that does connections to employment and other additional opportunities. They're not the only partners that we have. We have partnerships with other reentry providers that assist us with employment as well as continued training upon release.
Do you keep track of that? So when they are released, and because you have this MOUs, are you... Are they keeping track of like who's getting these jobs, the placements and things like that, to kind of see if whether they're using the certificates and all these things? How are you keeping track of that information?
Once we turn around... That's a phenomenal question, thank you. Once we turn around and transition that kid, and I call them kid just because of my age...
Yeah, they are. They're all babies.
That kid or adult to that reentry component, they are asked to track that link and that connection to employment and/or additional training.
And do you have those numbers?
I don't have, but we can work with our partners to secure that data.
Yeah, I think that that information is going to be really important, because I think sometimes when we talk about like what's going on, how are we making sure that we're actually making the true and real connections? And if these things are actually working, right? And if we see that they're not working, then that's the point of where we should be evaluating to change and move forward. Because a lot of these young people end up in these situations because we're not creating opportunities for them to get jobs. I've been saying this since I got here, we have to get to a place where we're reimagining the workforce for young people, because it's just nonexistent. And they're going to continue to end up in these situations because we're not doing our job. And so I would really love to get that information on what workforce development courses there being offered, and then how we are then connecting them once they are released, and seeing what trends are there, so we can start really evaluating that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Stevens. And I echo that, because as educators, we know that data drives our instruction. So data also drives your policy. So I... Moving forward, I think you should keep data in order to see where they end up. How can we serve better? You have to step back and assess and readjust the programs as you move forward to see what's working and what's not working. I wanted to follow up real quick on a question you said. New York City Public Schools are still talking to OMB. We know the deadline to submit all the pegs was October sixth. Can you clarify that for me, please?
I'm just going to reiterate, at this time, we started the process, but we haven't had any additional updates. That's all we have at this point.
So we need to bring OMB here to find out what's happening. Speaker Ayala.
Deputy Speaker.
Deputy Speaker.
But if you would like to promote me...
It's not a takeover, not a takeover.
Oh, my goodness. I won't tell the Speaker you said that. We won't... It don't leave this room. Thank you. I just wanted to say one thank you for the work that you do, the amazing work that you do, because I recognize how difficult and challenging it is to educate young people, period. Being the parent of, you know, several of them and still having, you know, challenges with the ones that I have left at home, I know that it's... It's sometimes... What do they... They call it a child... An act of futility, because they refuse to go to school. They hate school at that age, right? That's what kids do. And in this population, right, we know that a lot of them had already been disconnected prior to coming in contact with your individual agencies. But I would like to know, so, you know, we know young people are predisposed to hate school. I'm not going to assume that I know what's happening, you know, in the facility in terms of like how many of them are super excited in the morning or not, but would rather ask the question around, what are you doing differently to try to get them enthusiastic about going to school while they're in detention? Like, what are we doing differently than we would be doing in a regular high school in these facilities?
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ayala. I am thrilled that you've asked that question, only because the reality is that many of the eighteen-to-twenty-one-year-olds that come to our custody were indeed disconnected from school prior to their detention. When it comes to the DOC, and I've been with the DOC, if you allow me, for about, I just entered my twenty-third year. When I was first hired by the Department of Education, I came in as the Director of Education, and I concentrated my entire career at the DOC, ensuring access to education, previously to adolescents, and now the eighteen-to-twenty-one. When we talk about a schoolhouse, we purposely designed the schoolhouse different than what we do in all of the other housing areas. We add amenities. We have staff that are really willing and able to work with them, that are not just uniformed housing area officers, but become more of mentors. We have them on a schedule. We've invested in different uniforms for them, and that has worked to our advantage. Our partners from public schools have also basically continued something that we do. You know, let's not take for granted, kids need incentives. And what we do is, as partners, we give them different kinds of incentives, whether that is community engagement, which include family members coming in to spend longer periods of time as a visit, whether it is a festival, whether it is a special breakfast. Over the years, East River Academy has modified what originally was a breakfast of champions. We've involved them in different congregant settings to include basketball tournaments amongst themselves. You know, our environments are challenging, yet what we try to do in this partnership is create and instill a sense of normalcy. And I defer to our partners in case they want to add something else.
So because we expect all of our young people to go to school, we work in conjunction with our school partners. Every week, Student of the Week list comes out, and that is distributed to the building staff, and there is encouragement for both the school staff and the building staff to congratulate each young person who ends up on that list. We... Our graduations are very public, and the halls come down in support of their classmates and their hallmates who have graduated. Last year, we had students who wrote poems in support of their individuals who lived on their halls. They wrote speeches. Some of the staff wrote speeches, gave speeches at the graduations. School successes are shared with parents. They're also shared with lawyers and with judges. It's very, very important for the young people to feel that they are being recognized, and that is being factored into their cases. We also worked with New York Public Schools to bring in an entrepreneur program as a... What's it called? Oh, BizCamp, yes. And they... That was a class that was given in each secure facility. Our kids are very interested in building entrepreneur skills, and they did this over a period of time and gave a presentation as to their small business ideas. It was very exciting for the young people, and that information was also shared with their parents and their lawyers and the judges. That our young... We have a behavioral system that we use for our young people. That's how we provide incentives and also accountability for our young people who are struggling. The more they participate in school, the more eligible they become for incentives. And the school liaison teams, who are our uniform staff, spend a lot of energy kind of spreading the word about the young people who are participating with the staff so that they can encourage them on the halls. And we have seen over time that the young people who are on the halls are encouraging their fellow students who maybe are more reluctant to participate in school, to come to school so that it can look good for the hall. And so we have also provided incentives for the halls who, as a whole, have done really well in school attendance and engagement.
And then what we also do, in addition to what my partnering agency said, with regard to the ongoing collaboration, we make sure that when the students arrive to our spaces, that they're also well cared for and they're provided with instruction that's customized to address their needs. Because it's one thing to make sure that our students, when they arrive to us, that, okay, yes, you might be two or three grades behind, but we're here to help you and make sure that we customize instruction. So that goes into ensuring that on a weekly base... Sometimes, we strive for a weekly basis, but definitely on a consistent basis, that guidance counselors, social workers, as well as teachers are having roundtable conversations where we're assessing where the students are on an individual basis and what they need to move forward. As we stress, and you'll hear time and time again, transition begins on day one. And so we create plans for them, and they're active participants on where we're going and what we need to do. And just to echo with what was already stated, graduation is such a wonderful event. At both graduation ceremonies that I attended, not only did the student walk on stage to receive that diploma, but also officers and different ACS members walked along as well. Because it really is a community that is a team effort to make sure...
No, that's great. I mean, because I think that when we look at education, right, we all learn differently, and what works for one doesn't always work for other, which is why we have transfer schools, why we have, you know, trade schools, because we want to have options that better meet the needs of our students, right? And not everybody wants to go to college, but everyone should be equipped with employable skills, right? Which is what Councilmember Stevens was alluding to, and is something that's really important to us and really redefining the way that that looks in not only, you know, your individual agencies, but also like with our community-based partners, right? When we're engaging with young people, how are we retaining, you know, that youthful energy and transforming that into something spectacular? You know, when you mentioned entrepreneurialship, you know, our young people are very talented, right? Really incorporating the concept of creating small businesses and working with them, like that's... It's a different way, right, of learning, but it's still a level of education that kind of helps meet them where they are. And so obviously, we want to make sure that that, you know, that those models are being incorporated into the whatever curriculum because of the age group, right? These are older young adults, and they, you know, they learn differently. In regards to the... So do the young people have an opportunity to provide feedback? Like, is there like, you know, an opportunity for them to engage and say, hey, you know, I think that this is a more successful model, or I really appreciate that, but we could really do less, you know, with this? How are we engaging with them and receiving feedback from them?
With regards to our students, so I know with...
Yeah.
One of the things, and we all do this collaboratively, but I'll start the conversation, is that we have a space, and that's across all the programs, that there's a Student Leadership Council. And with the Student Leadership Council, the students are giving us real-time information about what's working, what's not working, and they give us suggestions. So for example, I visited a site... I visit the sites regularly, but I remember once visiting the site where the student was very frank. He said, "Please, sometimes stop talking to us. Kids have to talk to each other." And so that's why when you talk... When Nancy spoke about the importance of having other students encourage them, he said, "Please," he said, "you know what? I'm here because sometimes I didn't listen to an adult." He said, "But kids listen to kids. So sometimes if you want a message that's portrayed, let me do the conversation." And I respected him for that. And then we'll also get the, you know, every now and then we can have a basketball hoop here and there. But I'm very proud of the conversations that we have with our students that are on the Student Leadership Council, because they really give us concrete feedback on how we can incorporate more interactive activities in lessons, do demonstrations and so forth.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that. Now, in regards to the number of young students that refuse to attend, I'm sorry, you know, forgive me if I missed this earlier, but what is the percentage of young people that are refusing to attend school?
Can you repeat that question again? Because I said...
What is the percentage of young people that are required to be in school who are refusing to participate? I mean, like, is that even an option?
So I want to...
Can I answer that?
I'll give you an example. I'm a young person, you know, I don't feel like going to school today. I'm not going. Like, what happens? How many... How many times does that happen? And what is the, you know, what is the approach to addressing that?
I would... Principal...
Okay.
So if there are student refusals, that is a day-to-day, case-by-case scenario, and we have social workers, guidance counselors, as well as our ACS partners, the school liaisons that work with the student to find out or figure out what's going on, why they're hesitant, and we have counseling around that. So that is a case-by-case scenario, but it's always a joint effort in, you know, counseling a student from that. And it could be various reasons that are taking place. I mean, when I get to the root cause and promote them to come to school each day, it is by program that all students come to school. So that's the expectation, and that students will come to school by their halls. So that is a constant communication between DOE and ACS if there is any barriers that are impeding that.
But is that happening often? Are young people... And when I mean young people, I'm assuming I'm specifically thinking about those under the age of eighteen, because my understanding is that eighteen and over can choose to opt out if they wanted to?
Well, at Passages, we don't have an opt-out option. It is implied in programming that school is programming. So it is implied that they come to school, and if there is a... Some issues, then we handle that issue as is given, but there is no like form or anything like that to opt out of school.
But is school mandatory? So then is school mandatory for them?
For Passages.
At Passages? Okay. And what is the consequence for not going?
It's not really any different than the consequence anywhere for not going. I mean, so there are various categories of young people, right? We have kids who are new to the facility and may not have been in school for two years before they come to us. Some of those young people will just go to school. We say, "Your hall is going to school," and they will go to school. Some of the young people need a little bit more work to get them to a place where they will go. Sometimes, they will go once or twice a week to begin, and then we do a lot of work to try to get them to go more than once or twice a week. Some young people go to court, they get very bad news in court, they need... We plug in additional mental health services. They might meet with the school's social workers. We might increase the number of interactions that they have with our staff to help support them get through that. We have young people who have lost loved ones while they're in our custody. We're not going to force them to go to school while they are grieving. So there is a wide, wide range of reasons why young people don't go to school. So there is a wide, wide range of reasons why young people don't go to school in our custody, in the same way that there's a wide range of reasons young people don't go outside of our custody. But our expectation that we continually repeat to the young people, and that many of the young people lift up to each other, is that the expectation is that they attend school. And we have entire halls, every day they are in their seats in school. And so we have seen real success with this model. We still have work to do, but with this age group, there is always work to do in that area.
No, I, I, I'm, you know, I, I understand that and I, you know, which is why I began with thank you, because I know that it isn't easy. Listen, I, I have one at home and every day is like, do I have to go to school today? It's gonna rain. There might be a snowstorm. I heard that there might be terrorist attacks. Did you hear that? Do you, you know, and, you know, so every day we get there, but it's, it's a conversation. So I, I really can, can appreciate the position that you're in. And so I want to just transition very quickly to the, to the article that I referenced in my opening remarks, that, the Gotham article that came out in June about the use of classrooms as a means of separating detainees that, you know, may be in conflict. I would love to understand a little bit more about how often that occurs, why are we using classrooms, and if in fact it is true that while detained in those spaces, young people lose access sometimes to meals and the ability to use the restroom? Which seems like from the article, again, I, I would love to hear from you, could sometimes be hours, right, of detention without access to food or bathrooms?
So we do not use classrooms during the school day ever to hold our young people. We do not use classrooms as, as the article said, cells. We do not do that. We, that article, I, in full transparency, that article cited a conversation that was had with a former YDS who worked in the facilities before I started this position. So I can't speak to what his experience was, I was not there. I will tell you that I work out of the facilities, I am there four out of five days of the week. So when I tell you, we are not putting young people in classrooms other than for school purposes during the school day, I have seen that to be true. There are times when a young person might be dysregulated on the hall. Sometimes young people ask to have a break from their hall because those are spaces that are available after the school day. We might have a young person in a classroom with a staff. There are usually things to do for them, books, we might have a movie cart in there with them, they are always fed and they have access to the restrooms. The staff will take them from a classroom to the restroom if they need that. So I, I can't speak to why that article made the representations that it did, but currently those conditions are not in place.
Okay, so if in fact there was a situation where a young person was utilizing a classroom, it would be at the request of the young person, right? They, is that what you're saying?
Not, not always. There might be a reason why we need to separate young people, but we will not do that during the school day.
No, understood. I mean, I, I don't think I was, I don't, I don't think that I was implying that it would be specific to the school day, but is there at any time, you know, during the time that young people are detained, that the space is available? That we're separating young people from general population and putting them in a classroom setting or any other setting where they would be, you know, unable to access, you know, like, if I'm, if, if, in a, in a situation like this, we have, right, we have a, something happens, a fight breaks out, and now we're, we're putting a young person in a classroom, right? Using a classroom because I don't know what other space would, and that's what the article referenced. How long are we keeping that person there? Like, is there like a set time? Like, are we going to timeout for half an hour or are we here for five hours? And during that time, are those young people entitled to meals? Are they, you know, are they always receiving meals and have access to a restroom?
Yes, they always have access to a restroom, they always have access to meals. They would receive their meals generally on the same schedule as their hall receives meals, because if the, if the hall goes to the cafeteria or the meals are brought to the hall for individuals to eat, a meal will be brought for that individual. So they will get all of their meals and all of the in-between meal snacks. How long they are in there will depend on the situation. So if a young person de-escalates and it is possible to run what we call a circle up so that the young person who is involved in the conflict can be reintegrated into the hall, and that can be done quickly, then that will be done quickly. If the young person is not de-escalated and we need additional time, sometimes we will need to call mental health and a clinician will need to meet with the young person. Sometimes a young person will ask to speak to a parent and so we will arrange a phone call. Sometimes we will have supervisory staff come in and have separate sessions, both with the young person who is separate from the group and the group before the reintegration circle up happens. So it is very incident-specific on how we reintegrate.
Okay. All right. I think that, well, one more. What is the, the policy for addressing violence in the facility?
Can you say a little bit more?
What, what is your policy for addressing violence? Like, what, what is the, the consequence? Is that the consequence? Is it just separation?
Oh, no, separation is not actually our, our policy. It is one tool that we have in the toolbox. So there are multiple responses if there are incidents. So there might be an assessment on the behavioral system on STRIVE. So it, there might be if there's, if there's a fight between young people and they were, let's say, on a high level, they will drop a level or many levels and they will have to do a restorative activity to try to earn their way back to their prior levels. There are conversations that happen among the young people and the staff. It depends who was harmed in the incident. So how we structure that restorative practice will change depending on how the incident happens. They may lose access to non-educational programming, so many of the kids really like some of our after-school programming. And if they, if they engage in a fight, they may lose access to some of those, you know, extra programs that they like very much, that we kind of hold as a, you know, as something to encourage them not to engage in those. For the most serious incidents where there's real harm caused to someone, we have, we have rearrested young people who have caused significant harm to others. That does not happen very often. And we are seeing fewer and fewer serious incidents.
I'm happy to hear that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Speaker. I'm gonna pass it on to Councilmember Narcisse and I'll come back with my questions.
Thank you, Chair. What measure that you use to encourage those young folks to come to programs? Do you have anything in place that to encourage them?
Yeah, so we have, our partner is CCA. They, they run our after-school programming, all the, most of the programming runs through them. They write extremely effusive reports to the courts for young people who are engaged, very engaged in programming. The kids compete for those letters. It's very important for the judges to hear about the level of engagement that they're, they're in as far as programming. And so that is a very important incentive. They also get incentive points on our behavioral system, STRIVE, and so they are eligible for additional privileges and incentives if they participate.
Thank you. What level of training do educators and support staff receive to handle the unique, we're talking about unique challenges presented by this population, including safety, mental health, and motivational strategies?
Thank you for that question. So in addition to our educators at, receiving agency-specific training on the different protocols for the different sites, what we do internally is ensure that our teachers receive ongoing professional development. And so we've partnered with Special Education Department within New York City Public Schools as well as District 75 to ensure that our teachers are being equipped with de-escalation tactics, trauma-informed learning, as well as other, a variety of social-emotional learning aspects. We provide our teachers with training on specially-designed instruction. Granted, we do have a high percentage of special education teach, students that are in these spaces, but we, as, as I've said before, we view every single student as an individual. And we want to make sure that we can specially-design instruction for them. In addition, other trainings are inclusive to the citywide expectation with regards to pedagogy. So we give training on planning and preparation, create in a learning environment that's conducive to all students' engagement as well as professional development. So it's ongoing training throughout the year to ensure that they are equipped and ready to support a wide range of students.
You know why I'm asking those questions? Because sometimes we forget that the educators need all the support they need to cope as well.
No, absolutely. And so there's always a space for them as well. We do our own, like, one, something that we've launched this year is our mindful, is our miracle, my, our miracle minutes. So every morning, one of the pushes has been is that we instill it in all our teachers and staff, as well as our administrators, that they take that moment to reset, meditate, and just really make sure that they're doing their own health and wellness. And then we also have constant communication that if they need to, you know, have those, their own services with regards to counseling, that that needs to be addressed, those opportunities are there for them as well. But you're right.
Are their educational considerations and support programs available for individuals once they have ACS and DOC facilities? If so, how are these individuals made aware and they connect, and they connected to the some resources?
Can you repeat that question?
Like, how are they connected after they're part of the ACS and DOC when they leave the programs?
So what we, you, are you referring to the wraparound services that the students get? So one thing that we've done is really invested in ensuring that there's administrators leaving, leading the transition work. So when our students, when students come to us, we're in constant communication with their homeschools. And so we are constantly keeping them update with, with their guidance counselors and so forth, update us to the progress that the students are making. And so that when it's time for the students to transition out, what we also do is connect to, because our district is a district of alternative programs. We have prioritized admissions and placement in pathways to graduation if they choose to pursue a high school equivalency, co-op tech, if they want to continue with, I'm sorry, with CT, with, with CTE opportunities, and then also with JUSSK if they want to continue and go on to get a high school diploma. So that's one of the things that we've done to prioritize. Did I miss anything?
Yeah. I would like to add that at Passages, we have a transition assistant principal who is specific, specifically tasked with managing the social workers and guidance counselor, the transition piece, as well as social workers and guidance counselors being connected with students for at least six months after they, they leave the facilities. So as Superintendent Esperance stated, that there's constant communication with the receiving school, whether it's a homeschool or they have partnered with another school, there's constant communication after students leave. So it's really important to keep that continuum as students leave. And we develop partnerships locally throughout all of our different sites to make those connections and keep those connections.
Yeah. Chair, I may, I have two more questions. So I thank you, because the reason I want to follow up the continuity, because those population, those young folks, need their help not just to stop there, because we don't want them to end up on the streets and we see what's going on with mental health and everything else that's going on around us. What metrics are currently used to gauge the success of educational programming and services for detained youth? And how are these metrics used to inform programs, modifications or enhancement?
Thank you for that question. So one of the things that I just also want to reiterate is that when students come to us, they come for an average of 45 days, but we do have students that are probably with us of maybe 10 days, some a little bit longer. And then although we have students that'll come at 14, 15, 16 to 18, many of them were disengaged prior. And so I might come in as a 12th grader, but I might be a 12th grader in age, but on paper I might have one credit. So what the matrix that we use to really track our successes is that we look at credit accumulation, like the number of credits earned, the number of regents attained, we look at course pass rate. In addition, we look at certification attainment. So we do really provide, not only do we provide opportunities for them to get, get CTE credit, but we also want to make sure that they end in certification. With regards to our, and that's for our high school students, with regards to our HSC population, we look at the percentage of students who come in. So whenever a student comes in, they get a formal assessment through SOF for ELA and math, and then we also do tape testing. And so we monitor their progress with their reading levels and math letting on an ongoing basis. And then with the GED test, we look at the pass rate by subject. And so what we've done is if we recognize that, for example, that the math pass rate is low on a GED section, what we will do is lean in and go as granular as doing an item analysis of what type of questions that they're getting incorrect, and then also provide additional training to our math teachers so that they can customize instruction, as well as ensuring that if it's a need, that they need something that's specially-designed, that we're leaning in and providing access to the curriculum in a variety of ways. And so I'm gonna just give an example of something that's happening at East River Academy, is that we recognize that we have a high population of special education students that are coming in. And so Principal Threadgill has taken the lead in designing a class that is specially-designed for students who are performing three to four years before, below performance level so that we can provide them with targeted instruction. And not only are we doing that for the students who are struggling, we do also recognize that we have some students that are coming in excelling, and so we've created an extensions class for them. Principal Threadgill, do you want to speak a little bit more about that?
Thanks for that question. In terms of the enhanced literacy class, it is taught by two veteran special education teachers who are trained in the Orton Gilliam Wilson Reading Program and Reading Rewards. And we just take their IAPs, break those IAPs down, look at what their needs are and the behaviors that were in class, and we design an individual education plan for them, a learning plan, so that they get that customized learning. We also have an advanced GED class for those who have passed regents and don't need all the parts of the GED. So I have a master teacher who leads that class and teaches that class and advances them through the GED work at a faster pace than my other classes.
Okay, my time is up, but I have to have two more questions. I'm gonna put it together and you can separate it. How are families involved in the educational process and progress of these young individuals? And what measures are in place to encourage and facilitate this involvement? That's one. Are there integrated services that address the mental health needs of those young folks? I think you mentioned it somewhere before, but I just want to be specific in what you're doing.
And so for that, I'll allow Principal Rashid to go a little bit deeper with what we do at Passages Academy.
Thank you for that question. With Passages, we have two parent coordinators who are assigned and, and design events for parents. They actually have a support, a group that, that meets monthly. So that's one thing that the parent coordinators do. They also, when we have our parent-teacher conferences, we have parent-teacher conferences that take place. that take place. Right now, they're virtually, but in the past, parents were invited to the facilities to meet with teachers in the facilities, as well as with their students when they came to the school area, so they can get an idea of what is, what the program looks like, what the program feels like. So that's something that we continue to do, having that parent outreach. Also, upon intake, the social workers and guidance counselors reach out to the families, let them know where, you know, that their students are with Passages Academy, and what educational services that we provide, as well as if there's any students that are looking at the GED track, there's conversations about that with the families as well. So there's always a connection between what happens at school and the families. And we spoke a little bit about before, when we have graduations, families are invited to attend the graduations and be a part of that community experience. So it's really about creating a community experience for students as well as parents.
So thank you. I know my time is up, so, but thank you for your service, and thank you. Yesterday, I was one of the fashion show with those kids, having a designer coming from Italy, and you should see that. I mean, those young folks that have needs, high, you know, needs, but they can function when they have opportunity and exposure. And you should see how proud they are with the things that they design. And young folks that normally other country will put aside, so I am so happy that we're not. And I think, I truly believe that we can do much more, so that's the reason that I'm always having faith in folks that delivering services, and we are here to support and to ask the question, to make sure that we strike a balance. So thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your partnership, and for, because you always visit many of our programs.
Thank you.
And so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a quick question on students who leave your facilities. How does re-entry look like? Can you, can you guide me through that? Because I worked on a similar case about last year. Students with justice involved went through your system, but it took them two years to get back into New York City Public Schools. Walk me through that process. When they leave your detention facilities, what is the plan to re, for them to re-enter school?
So when we, so the minute that students come into our program, we start with transition. And so they will sit with a guidance counselor, social worker. In Passages, it's called the Blueprint. In East River Academy, it really is like an individual plan of where do you want to end? And so with regards to that, because we always want to have them understand that at the end of the day, you have to have a plan because you're going to go back into society. So based on the results of their assessment, they share their interests and the different skills that they'd want, and the different things that they want to pursue. With regards to, so it's just New York State jurisdiction that they have the right to return to their homeschool if they want to. What we will do is always provide them with a platform that if you want to transition back to a school, a program within D-79, we prioritize that. So there's not necessarily, I know there might be some situations where it might be a delay for particular students depending on where, hm?
This, we're talking about two years. It took him two years to re-enter New York City Public Schools after his justice-involved case was over. It took two years. So walk me through that process, that a student lost two years of instruction for him to get back into New York City Public Schools. So I want to know the timeline, when they leave detention, what's the goal to get them back, and how long should that take? This was a D-75 student.
So that, that's what I was going to ask, was it a student that had disabilities or so forth because it was a D-75 program? I know one of the things that we pride ourselves on in New York City Public Schools overall is that there's always a plan and that we adhere to the transitions. So what I would want, and I don't know if this is not the space and form, is just find out more information about that particular incident so that we can investigate and really dig deep as to what were the missteps. But I know that what we, since taking over, there's been an intentionality, and that's why we have assigned a supervisor to transition, to ensure that those type of mistakes that you're speaking about doesn't happen. We want to make sure that before even a decision is made, that there's a plan that's in place. And so as I'll reiterate again, the goal is always to have a plan in place for them to move forward. We have given them priority seating in D-79 programs, so if they wanted to go to pathways to graduation, if they wanted to go to JSK, if they wanted to go to co-op tech, if they wanted to go to restart, that they have that priority seating there. What I will want to find out a little bit more, and I know this is not the time, is what was, just kind of investigate, what was that student told specifically that delayed so that we could make sure that something like that isn't repeated? I will say this, one of the things that we've been intentional about is that we have a partnership with District 75, like we have a liaison on the team that we engage with, because what we found in, like I said, once taking over this seat, is that we don't want there to be any gaps in getting any type of information about our students. So in addition to seeing what they're about on paper, we want to always be in close communication to their homeschools, so we could dig deeper and find out exactly what they need. So not only do we call the schools, we also keep the parents engaged, because we want to make sure that it's a collective effort that's moving the work along.
And when they leave the facilities to re-enter our communities, our societies, however you want to put it, is there a placement letter given to that student as to where they're going to go? I just want, I just want to see what the process is. Who are you talking to? What agencies are you working with? How do we move? What, this case I'm talking about is a real case, not too long ago, that my office dealt with. Two years. So his justice-involved case was resolved, took shorter time to resolve than getting him back into New York City Public Schools. Not only did we fail him, he fell through the crack and we forgot about him. So we don't want this to happen, and I'm sure my colleagues will agree, we don't want this to happen anymore. Going through the criminal justice system is enough, and not being able to attend schools for two years is unacceptable for me.
And I acknowledge and echo those sentiments. We don't want any type of interruption that happens with regards to academics with our students. And so that's why I'm requesting that at a later time, if you can give me that specific detail, that specific student, so that we make sure that it's not replicated. But just with regards to how we have become proactive, how we are proactive in this work, is that from the minute a student enters in, the transition process is in place. And what I will allow is for Principal Rashid to give a little bit more granular detail of how it works at Passages.
Yes, thank you for that question. Superintendent Esperance stated that homeschool re-entry happens immediately. So when a student leaves and is discharged from Passages Academy, their homeschool, it's in the ATS system that they are immediately accepted back into their homeschool. So that was very unfortunate that that happened to that, that young student, and it shouldn't have happened. But that is the process. Now, if they want to go to a different school, that's where our social workers, guidance counselors, and assistant principal of transition will manage the communication with the next school. We also have welcoming committees set up where the receiving school is introduced to the student via phone call or the family, now through teams, to prepare for that student to arrive, so that there is a seamless transition. So those are the protocols in place to make those transitions seamless and happen upon discharge.
And how are students with IEPs assessed in your program? And are they all receiving their mandated service? We know sometime that doesn't happen.
So I'm happy to say that the minute students enter into our facilities, we go and we dig into their IEPs, and we create something known as an SEP, which is a special education plan. In the special education plan, what we lean into and lift are the mandated services, as well as the classifications, as well as any type of information that will help us really provide a personalized instructional plan for those students. At both facilities, East River Academy as well as Passages, there is a speech teacher onsite, as well as a counseling teacher. For students who have OT or any other type of related services, we contract those services out by way of SRA. And so our goal is to always make sure that the students are getting the services that they need, as well as that we adhere to the requirements that's outlined in the IEP, because the goal is to success for every single student that comes through our doors.
And those who miss their services, is there a way for them to make up because of absence, lockdowns? How is that, how does that work?
So for any student that misses their services, always an opportunity, not only for lockdown, but there's some students that are court-involved that might have to go to court that day, or today might not be the day for me, I might get ill. So any student that doesn't have a service, we do do makeups for them.
And how did you handle that during the pandemic?
During the pandemic, I'm going to be transparent, I was not in the seat during the pandemic, so I'm going to defer.
On else, who can answer?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to my principals for that.
In terms of counseling mandates, we did have the opportunity to do teleconferencing through phone calls for counseling services. So those mandated counseling services were continued through that process.
What can you, can you explain the factors you consider when you modify the IEP into an SEP?
No, we don't modify. I just want to be very clear, the IEP and SEP is comparable. We do not modify. The only thing that you might see a mild adjustment is that some IEPs come in as a 12 to 1:1 restrictive setting, or 15 to 1:1. Our class sizes, I'm sorry, our class sizes by design in these secured settings are smaller. And so we are actually able to give them more personalized instruction that may not, that may be versus what's requested in that IEP. So we don't make modifications, we make adjustments because we definitely recognize that our students are in secured settings, but that shouldn't mean that instruction should be interrupted whether they have an IEP or not.
Thank you. For Passage Academy, Crossroads and Horizon, there's been reports recently of classrooms in two juvenile detention centers being used as makeshift jail cells during the school day. Can you tell us more about that and what you know about the situation, if anything is being done to remedy that?
Thank you for that question. I just want to reiterate what was said by my partnering agency. There's never been a time that we have been at our, our classrooms, ready to receive children, that we've witnessed students in those rooms.
So that news article was false?
I would say.
Is that what we're saying?
No, I mean, to be quite honest, whenever, whenever we are there at the doors, ready to receive students, the classrooms are ready for the students.
When students are put in self a period of time, do they get to make up the instruction they missed?
So in, in juvenile-
Can you move the mic a little closer so I can hear you? Thank you.
In juvenile detention, we don't have cells, we don't put our young people in cells if they are sick and they can't be moved to a classroom, or they're in court.
So if they, if the students miss classes for any reason, if they're in court, if they're sick, if they needed a moment, as what my colleague shared, what we will do is provide work for them, and then they will also have the teacher who will assist them with the work or one-to-one tutor. So work is provided.
So they also stated that in the article, there was packets just given to the students. So is that false as well?
No, that's false. We don't just give packets to the students. We give packets in the event if students can't have instruction for that day, and you've already lifted some of the reasons why, but we don't just give packets to students idly.
So students who do not attend class, they don't receive a homework to complete on their own?
No, the students who, so students who don't attend class, so I'm going to go back again for the reason. So we do not give packets for students who are refusing instruction, just to be very clear. But if for some reason a student cannot make it to class, whether it be for the fact that they had to go to court, or maybe they were having their own, like they were sick, whether it be a physical sickness or a mental health day that they were taken, we will provide packets, but it won't be an extensive packet that they do for a course of over, like, weeks or so forth. It'll be packet to make up the work that they have for that day. The expectation is that the tutor will go in and provide support, as well as the teacher when they come back, because we don't want to interrupt instruction.
And for our younger students, are their parents informed that they did not attend classes? How does that work? No? Your underage adolescents, if they don't attend classes, is the parent informed?
So if there's a situation, and I think this goes back to how we communicate and how we're always constantly taking the pulse of the students and keeping the parents in the loop. And so if we recognize that there's a trend in attendance, that a student isn't showing up, that'll be something that's mentioned in those conversations that we have around the students about why they're not coming to school, if it's an extended illness, is we keep those parents informed of those things.
In our last hearing we had with you, you noticed, you talked about students in East River Academy being screened for dyslexia. The plans that put in, is the plan putting in place already, or has it started? Has it been implemented, or where are you in that?
So with that plan, as you know, the screening for dyslexia is an initiative, is an initiative and that has been, that we strongly back the mayor, as well as the chancellor with, with regards to ensuring that any, every New York City resident is able to read. With regards to the dyslexia pilot that was in place, what we had, what we did do is begin last, in the spring, that we started working very closely with New York City Public Schools' Special Education Department. And so where we are at right now is that we are continuing our professional development so that we could build the capacity of our teachers. And then we're also not only building the capacity on how they're implementing the screener, but we're also researching ways, not researching, let me take that back. We are organizing our instruction to ensure that once students are screened, and if they do come up with a screen of having traits of dyslexia, that we have the resources and interventions in place. So to answer your question in totality, we have moved along from when we first met back in April, so I'm very proud of that. We have visited the sites, identified what teachers will be implementing them, and so the goal is to continue that work so that we can start initiating the screeners.
How many teachers have you trained so far?
I don't have a specific number, but I know that we've targeted the teachers who deal with literacy and our reading specialists.
And how do you recruit the students you want to screen? Are you screening all of them or some of them?
Our intention is to do all the students that we have with prioritizing our students that we know that have students, IEPs, because we definitely recognize that we might have students who are coming in without an IEP that might be dyslexic. And so the goal is to prioritize the students with IEPs, but then also use teacher observations to ensure that no one is slipping through the cracks.
And there will be ongoing PD for the teachers?
It's all constantly. Ongoing PD for the teachers is a must, because as we continue to do this work and we get assessment, as Councilmember Narcisse said, not only are we use, not only are we tracking, but we use that data to drive our instruction decisions.
Quick question, what kind of de-escalation training and mental health-trauma-informed training does the DOE, ACS, and DOC staff with, use to interact with students that are incarcerated?
So we provide our, in partnership with District 75, we do de-escalation training, but we also lean in onto TCIS. And are you familiar with TC, and I, I don't want you to be offended by me asking if you're familiar with TCIS, because I know we throw acronyms around. But TCIS is really targeted professional learning that really equips teachers with the skills to really de-escalate and just be mindful of not only what the child is doing, but why it's happening, and digging it deeper. We also partnered with Brain Power, which is an agency, which is an organization that really allows us to do team building, as well as the, really being intentional on the mindfulness moments. And then we also have a SEL, Social Emotional Learning Guide, that we've created in-house, so that our teachers are equipped with recognizing that every day, there should be some type of mindfulness moment that's happening in the classroom. And then I'll pass it over to my colleagues, because I'm used to it for ACS.
So all of our YDS staff receive trauma training provided by Bellevue clinicians when they're on-boarded. We're actually doing a booster training now for our YDS staff who have been on staff, and Bellevue will be conducting that booster training. The DYFJ model is heavily focused on a counseling model. We, our dedicated school liaisons are available to counsel the students along with their hall staff, who are in the classroom with the students. The Bellevue clinic that is onsite in each of our secure facilities, who treat the majority of our young people who are in care, also provide additional support for the students and the staff caring for them.
Thank you for that question. All of our uniform members undergo rigorous training through our academy when they are first on-boarded. Officers who are assigned to the school floors receive specialized training, including training on de-escalation, conflict resolution, interpersonal community- training on de-escalation, conflict resolution, interpersonal communication skills, training related to young adult brain development, as well as restorative justice circles. Our program counselors, associate correctional counselors, social workers, as well as intervention specialists are always trained by our own assistant commissioner, assigned to counseling on evidence-based anger management, interactive journaling, trauma-informed care and more. Know that when it comes to mental health services, as a department, we have a strong partnership and collaboration with CHS. And so anytime that outside the purview of the DOE, we identify their challenges, we make an immediate referral to mental health.
And how often are they trained, your uniform officers?
When it comes to our officers, the frequency varies. School officers are trained on an annual basis. And anytime we onboard a new officer before being assigned to the school floor, our educational services unit must train the officer.
How many ENL students do you have in your program?
Thank you for that question. I'm going to just give it to you what we have right now as of 10 to 2023. So within our Passages, hold on a second, give me one second. So it's 6% at Passages and 25% at East River Academy.
Do you have bilingual staff on?
Yes, we have bilingual staff at both facilities.
And you provide?
And we provide the L services. And we also do translation services to make the work accessible.
You have ESL certified teachers?
Yes. And then we also give the, I know this is more information, but we also give the opportunity for our students who come in speaking Spanish and want to pursue an HSC. We do offer the GED in Spanish for them as well.
Okay. So percentage, you said, what percentage of students who receive all their required services this school year compared to the previous?
So what percentage of the students received?
What is the current number and percentage of L students that receive all of their required services this school year?
So with information like, to be very transparent, with information like that, okay, so with the number of percentage of students, so we have 90% of our L students at Passages have received L services this year so far. And then all the L students in East River Academy on the HSC pathway, and 51% are older than 21 years old. But however, they're still receiving the services. And in addition to that, we track it when we have our weekly conversations on how the students are doing.
And how does this compare to the previous school year?
I don't have that previous school year information at this time, but I, oh wait, let me see, hold on a second. I just want to make sure I'm giving you the right information, so that's fine. The only thing that, what we do have is just a percentage of Ls that we had in previous years. So in previous years, we have 7% L in East River Academy. And then I can give you in Passages, previous school year, we had, no, 6%? Yeah, it was 6% as well at Passages with regards to the number of students.
How many bilingual staff are assigned to work with L students in secure ACS facilities and at East River Academy?
So I would have to come back to you with that specific information, but I do want to reassure you that we do have bilingual staff at both facilities. And not only is it just that we have bilingual staff, in Passages, we have three L teachers. And in East River Academy, I can give you that number right now. In East River Academy, we have one ENL teacher, one bilingual Spanish, and then three, one bilingual counselor, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. So it's one ENL teacher, one bilingual counselor, and three Spanish-speaking teachers at East River Academy.
Okay. So all of their services mandated ESL hours are being met?
Mm-hmm.
What is the number, percentage of students who secure an ACS and DOC facilities who have IEPs or 504 plans?
So I'll give them to you by location.
Thank you.
This is Glazier's. Look at the chart. I think there's a chart.
I'd like to recognize Councilmember Shaker.
Give me one second.
Councilmember Shaker.
So in East River Academy, we have 46% as of 10 to 2023, and at Passages, it's 59%.
In your ACS or DOC facilities, IEP or 504 plan, how do you, as well as race disability classification and gender and L status, is that how the category is for them?
Yeah. So we haven't broken that yet.
What number and percentage of students with disabilities receive all their mandated IEP service this school year? And how does that compare to the previous school years?
So at this point right now, we have 87% of active East River Academy students who are eligible for IEP services have a special education plan. And 100% of the active Passage students who are eligible for IEP services have a special education plan.
What percentage of students with disabilities receive 50% or more of their mandated service?
With 50% or more of their mandated services, so I'm going to reiterate again, the numbers that I just shared with you are the students, is the percentage of students that we transitioned into their special education plan, and we use their special education plans as guidance throughout. So they're receiving their services as outlined with the educational plan, and anything that can't be offered in-house, we have an, we provide an SRA so that we can contract those services out.
Which, if students didn't receive which, their service, all of their services, which one didn't they receive? And how do, you said you made it up through SRA?
We would, yeah, we would make it up, we would make it up through the RSA. That specific data, we don't have right now of how many received it versus one who didn't, but we can follow up with that, because we do a lot of that stuff manually in our conversations when we keep track with the students.
How many psychologists do you have at the East River Academy?
We don't have any psychologists, but we definitely have guidance counselors and social workers.
How many psychologists are assigned to provide the special education evaluations to students at Crossroad, Horizon and those attending?
So I'm going to share with regards to the special education evaluations, we don't do the traditional triennial and annual reviews. It was based on a settlement with prior litigation with both agencies. So the SEP is what we look at. And so with the SEP, they are guidelines that we have within a 30-day period that we extract the information from the IEP and we implement it. And those SEPs are valid for a year. And then we do have annual conversations if it does go past a year with them in that space.
Okay. This was something I talked about earlier, and I want to circle back a little bit. Are there specific transition coordinators in each facility? I know you said that earlier, and I understand is that the guidance houses are now handling the transition for all students. However, these councils do not have specialized knowledge or access to DOE information on placements for students who go to a different school from where they attended before being in detention. So we often hear there's a gap, like I mentioned earlier, in enrollment in schools when they are released. So I just wanted to reiterate that, that part.
Okay.
So how do we close that gap?
So what we, like, and we did, so that was, that's an excellent question that we can go deeper in on with regards to, we do have access to where the students come from. I just want to be very clear on that, because we use the same ATS system that the DOE has. So our, so it's not that we're D79 separate of DOE, even though we're in incarcerated settings, we are an extension of. So we have access to all the different programs that New York City Public Schools. So we have access to CCS, we have access to ATS. So we're very clear on where the students came. And the reason why we go a little bit deeper is that we want to make sure that what we're seeing in the system is accurate, so that's why we always make contact with the home schools. And I'm going to reiterate again, it breaks my heart about what happened with that student, and I want to really dig deep to find out more information about that, so that's not repeated, because we have systems and structures in place to make sure that we're tracking students from the minute they arrive to when they move forward.
Yeah. So what is the three-month attendance rate for students post-discharge from Crossroads, Horizon, East River Academy? And what steps are DOE, ACS taking to improve that rate?
So with East River Academy, the data is limited, because many of the students, once they leave Rikers Island, will go upstate, many of them, so we don't have the data with regards to that. We only have one, we only have three for that number, but with regards to Passages, we have 103 has pre and post-attend rate data. We have, we have, sorry, we have pre and post-attend rate data for 103 students at Passages. So prior attendance rate would be 44%, post-attendance rate would be 52%, and post-attendance rate at least 70% is 31%.
Another question. How do you work with students who are in foster care that comes in your care? How does that work, ACS?
We have a dedicated crossover unit. And so when a young person who's in foster care enters a detention facility, the crossover unit contacts and coordinates with the foster care agency. And then they work with the case management unit in each facility so that visits can be arranged for the young people. The case managers will reach out to the foster care agencies to ensure that the, that the foster care agencies are visiting. And if those visits are not happening, then outreach is made to the, to our crossover unit to work with the agencies to improve contact with our young people.
And what's the plan when they are discharged? Let's say they are discharged. What's the plan between ACS and foster care agency?
So if a, if a child is in foster care, the foster care agency's relationship with that youth continues while the child is in care, and so their planning responsibilities continue. And they are expected, if that child returns to the foster care placement where they were prior to coming into detention, then the foster care agency resumes their oversight of that placement.
And do they help, they, of course, they help re-enter that young person into schools or whatever?
Yes. Yes.
So what kind of diagnostic assessment is done to determine a young person's learning level when they arrive in ACS or DOC court-ordered custody? When is it done? By whom? And how is the information used?
So all students who arrive to us, once they have, after they've done the orientation process with the respective agencies, we do our own internal assessments as well. So we do a STAR assessment for math and literacy performance, as well as TAP testing for 11 and 12 for the HSC track in addition to that. So that's done within the first 10 days. In addition to that, we do ongoing assessments of the students, whether it be through one-to-one conversations with the teachers, classroom observations, and the work that they produce. And then we also make sure that we go back and do post-testing, depending on how long the student is with us, to measure progress and gains.
Any challenges you ever face getting that work done?
I think the biggest challenge that we just face educating in incarcerated settings is that we don't know what tomorrow is going to be for the students, because ultimately every day starts a different path. So what we try to make sure that we do is that when they're in with us, that they walk away learning something. And so we're really intensive and personalized. Want to say that's the biggest hindrance, is just that, you know, we have students that are with us for two days, sometimes people are with us for 45 days, sometimes people are with us for a year. It really depends on the system, so that is probably the biggest hurdle.
That's the biggest hurdle? Okay. Does New York City Public Schools provide surveys to student teachers and parents at Passages, Passages Academy and East River Academy? If not, is the New York City Public School working towards collecting informative data from student teachers and parents in these facilities?
So what we've done, because we are in secured sites, we don't do the traditional green envelope that tends to go out across the city. But we do have our Director of Data, Ben Mead, who really leads the work on ensuring that we customize surveys so that we have it in all our settings. So we still follow the same, we use the same company that's used for the green survey that's given around citywide, but we customize it so that the questions that are being asked are tailored to the students that we are serving and in those settings.
And you've gotten that, you're able to work one-on-one with the parent and the child, so how do you get that data?
So what we do is we do administer the survey, so the survey can be done, not necessarily, it can be done on paper, it could be done electronically. And so we give a timeframe so that we can get information from them all. We also have exit surveys that we do with our students, just to hear about the experiences, as well as, as I lifted earlier, that we have the ongoing conversations through our Student Leadership Council. And then we also have ongoing conversations with our parents. It's really important that although these students are in secure setting, that they still feel close to home and that they have that link. So we have parent newsletter that goes out, as was already previously mentioned. We'll do our virtual, our virtual parent-teacher conferences, and I've sat in on a couple of them, where I've heard parents use that platform as a space to, while my child called home or my family might call home and said, "This, is there a way that you can meet this need?" Or even calling to celebrate, you know what, my child said that they're really being well cared for and that there's somebody there to speak to and that they're appreciative of our work.
What type of curriculum are used in these facilities?
So we use state-aligned curriculum with regards to math, science, ELA and social studies, so the same state standard align. The only modifications, I hate the word modification, the only adjustments that we make, because modification means that we water it down, and we don't. The only adjustments that we make is that we customize it to the needs and the performance levels of the students that are coming into us. As I mentioned earlier, we might have some students that come in at 17 years old but have never, that are non-readers. So we don't give them second-grade work, but we definitely will take and annotate and provide accessible tools so that they can access the work. And we provide supports and structures so that they can demonstrate progress. I want to give a, I would like to actually share a story about a student that came into us through Passages at a recent graduation. He came in at a second-grade performing level, alternate assessment, and within four years, because of the partnership that we did with ACS and the tutoring and how we pooled all our resources, he graduated with a HSC diploma. So that would mean that he went from a second grade to a 12th grade performance level within four years.
There are success stories.
Yeah.
So like, New York City Public Schools, I keep reminding them, they need to celebrate those success stories, as sometimes as gloomy as the stories are, but there are success. There are kids who made it out and changed their lives. And I keep telling New York City Public Schools, I hope you're listening and taking notes, as I've always reiterated, the need to celebrate it. Unfortunately, it's under those conditions, but however, to make it out, to define the odds that were stacked against you is a call for celebration. Thank you for that. That's important to know. How does your GED, I know you have a GED program, how does your GED program work in these facilities? Can you just walk me through?
So the GED program is the HSC program. So when we keep saying HSC, it is the GED. So depending on where students come in determines what pathway that they'll take. And so if we have students, and I know Principal Thredgrill mentioned this earlier, if we have students that come in with a high number of Regents, and the most efficient pathway for them to get to the next level would be a high school equivalency, which is the GED, that's the path that we put them on, because they have the Regents. And then if there are some students in the same Passages, if there are students who once again are overage, undercredited, but they have Regents underneath their belt, that'll be the pathway that they take. So HSC, also known as the GED, is offered in both spaces.
And you have an instructor there, or this is done online?
No, it's an instructor. So what will happen is So what will happen is because in East River Academy, there's a high population of students who are, it's 96%, yeah, 96% of the students are on that HSC pathway. And so instruction is done primarily to address those needs. But we do have teachers that are supporting the students that are on high school diploma track. And then in Passages, it's the flip, that we have students that are on high school diploma track. But we do acknowledge that there are some students, because of their age and performance level, are more, the HSC track is more of a one that would give immediate success. We have those students that'll have customized instruction for them. And then they'll have tutors and teachers that guide them through the work.
One of my colleagues had asked me this question. They're concerned about the quality of educational program for students who are pursuing the GD program. So for students working towards GD, students have access to live instruction for GD. Is the same for both Passages and East River?
Yes, it's the same for both, but the way, as I explained, in East River Academy, we have a high number of students that are on the HSC track. And so they are all live instruction. That's what live instruction, like if you walk into a classroom, that's the HSC track. You might see students who are on the diploma track, that'll be more small group targeted instruction. And it's the flip at Passages, where a majority of our students are on a high school diploma track. And so you'll see pockets of students that are working at the HSC with regards to the GD. And so they have customized instruction and supports. And then there is a tutor or teacher that's guiding them through that.
How many students do you normally have in those classes?
So the classes are not separate, they are integrated. So every day, teachers are giving a class list to identify their student groups. So the students who are on the GD list are provided with their assignments. And it's in the classroom. So that's how, that's what the function of it is.
Because I see your face. So with regards to what it is, is that our classes are differentiated. So it doesn't matter, like the way we group our classes, all our teachers are always prepared to teach a wide range of students. So if you have a class list where it says that you might have three students on the HSC track and seven students doing the high school diploma, the teacher knows exactly who those students are and they're provided the resources so that they can tailor instruction.
Correct.
Okay.
Every day, it's not different, it's just as new students-
Come in, yeah.
You want to have the most updated information. So we do daily class lists for new students coming in or if another student has come from a different hall. So students, teachers have the most updated information every day.
And at East River Academy, since 201 of our students, 201 of our students, 193 of them on the HSC track. All instruction is provided by certified teachers in content areas in social studies, math, social studies, and ELA, as well as an ENL teacher. And then we have our CTE in digital literacy and culinary arts. We do, every classroom is based on the GD. And, you know, it's important for us to make sure that every student gets what they need. So that's why I did create two classes, one an advanced GD class for those who are coming in with past Regents that take the place of a sub test on the GD, and then an enrichment literacy class to help those who come in at the lower reading levels to gain those fluency skills and comprehension skills so that they can at least make those gains in tape, in math and reading.
Thank you. What number of percentages of the students enter ACS or DOC custody from District 75 schools?
I don't have that particular, I don't have that specific number, but I do want to share that when you hear the percentage of how many students that we have in special education that are in these facilities, they don't all come from District 75. They're representative of the 1 through 32 districts as well as D-75. So it's not all D-75 students. We do have D-75 students that are in the facilities. And so that's why we were intentional this year, not this year, but we've been intentional to make sure that we have a partnership with the District 75 Superintendency Team so that there's that smooth transition, that there's no interruption of the services that the students need.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Chair, and thank you so much to the administration for your testimony today. We will now be turning to public testimony. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each. For our in-person panelists, please come up to the table. Once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering testimony. So for our first in-person panel, we have Elizabeth Bernard, Anna Arkin Gallagher, and Hussein Yatabary. Please make your way to the desk, thank you. Elizabeth Bernard, you may begin your testimony.
Good afternoon. My name is Elizabeth Bernard and I am a Staff Attorney for the School Justice Project at Advocates for Children of New York. As an attorney on the School Justice Project, I represent court-involved youth as they navigate the significant challenge of receiving educational services and special educational services, both while they are in placement and as they are transitioning out of placement. In recent years, we have seen an effort to improve the educational services that youth receive while in juvenile detention and placement. But despite these efforts, a high number of youth within these facilities and youth re-entering communities continue to face barriers to receiving an education. We see these issues every day in our work with the young people we serve. Recently, we've noticed that many youth who re-enter their communities from detention are left with no school placement, which causes further delays in their academic progress and delays in receiving IEP mandated services. This year, I worked with a parent whose son served 10 months at Crossroads. When he was released in August of 2023, he was given no school placement letter and not provided with any assistance to ensure a smooth transition into an academic setting. This was despite the fact that engagement in school was a condition of his release. Instead, he was connected to AFC in September through a partnering ATI program that was struggling to find him a school placement after he was released. We were able to quickly assist once we learned about the situation, but the student missed school for weeks in the meantime. His mother later shared that he had not had an IEP or SEP meeting, as testified earlier today, in over a year. He did not take, he did not take grade-appropriate classes while in placement at Crossroads, and he received no IEP mandated services during his 10 months at Crossroad. This is a systemic issue that needs attention as numerous families experience these challenges. Intro 542's requirement that agencies report on educational programming will help address the lack of data reporting focused on this population, allow for public access to this information, and create an avenue to assess what changes need to be made to improve educational programming and services in these facilities. Given the continued systemic issues outlined above, Advocates for Children of New York strongly supports Intro 542 to ensure transparency, monitoring, and accountability of children and youth in court-ordered settings. We, along with other advocates in this field, have a number of suggested recommendations to make this bill stronger and to allow for data to better be utilized for systemic change. We are attaching our recommendations to our written testimony. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and I would be happy to answer any questions you may have for me.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Anna Arkin Gallagher.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Anna Arkin Gallagher. I'm a supervising attorney and policy counsel in the education practice at Brooklyn Defender Services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. We provide legal representation and informal advocacy to our school-aged clients and parents of children in New York City schools. Many of our clients are involved in the criminal legal system and a number of our clients are incarcerated on Rikers Island or in juvenile detention facilities. We believe children and young people learn best when they're in their homes and not behind bars. The best way to provide educational supports to the young people we serve is to avoid putting them in detention and focus on diverting them from the criminal legal system altogether. But for those who are in jail and detention, we also believe the city must do more to improve the educational services they receive. Our written testimony will elaborate further on what that means for young people in non-secured detention and juvenile detention facilities. But for my testimony today, I want to focus specifically on the needs of school-aged people on Rikers Island. Young people on Rikers have a right to educational services through the school year in which they turn 21. Nevertheless, school-aged youth on Rikers continually struggle to access educational services. And frankly, we've seen a quite different situation than the one DOC described earlier today. Every week, we learn of young people who wish to attend school on Rikers and are unable to do so. Some young people are placed in facilities on Rikers that don't have school services available. Others are housed in facilities that do have educational services available but are not being housed in one of the limited number of program units. Some of our clients who are not in program units have requested to transfer into program units but have not been moved for weeks or ever. Others confront the difficult decision of whether to transfer into a new and unfamiliar unit in order to attend school or to instead stay in more familiar surroundings and not have school access. One 18-year-old that we worked with, a special education student, requested to go to school immediately upon arriving at Rikers. He filled out a paper form to request educational services and repeatedly informed correction officers of his desire to attend school. He was on Rikers for the entirety of last school year and attended a single week of school. I learned just yesterday, as I was writing this testimony, that another one of our clients, an English language learner who thrived at East River Academy over the summer, has not been able to attend school since August. He has been told by correction officers that the school floor is, quote, "too crowded." In the last few weeks, we learned that several of our school-aged clients are being detained in the new enhanced supervision housing at RMSC, known as RESH, and have been told they are not able to access educational services until they leave restrictive housing. These stories are not outliers. We hear constantly from the young people we serve at Rikers that they want to use their time on Rikers to further their education and are being prevented from doing so. Coupled with the cuts to programming on Rikers Island, the people we represent are increasingly spending time there with nothing productive to do. All young people at Rikers who wish to attend school must be able to do so, as is their right, including students placed in restrictive housing units. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much, Hussein Yatabary.
Is the red light on?
It's on now.
Okay, mic check.
Honorable Chair Joseph and all distinguished members of the New York City Council, my name is Hussein Yatabary, the new Executive Director of Muslim Community Network. Firstly, I express my sincere gratitude for today's opportunity to testify for our push for Intro 542, which underscores the importance of detailing educational programs and services for justice-involved youth. MCN has been dedicated to conveying an accurate, unbiased portrayal of Muslims. Our endeavors span from youth empowerment to women's rights advocacy, to hate crime mitigation and civic education promotion. Two points to speak upon for youth raised in Islam and reverts whose conversion occurred during their incarceration in prison because we really want to speak for that population. In 2023, we actually brought in our outreach to juvenile detention centers in the Bronx and Brooklyn during Ramadan in collaboration with the Chaplain's Office at Horizons and Crossroads Juvenile Detention Centers. MCN provided workshops for newly converted Muslim youth and those curious about Islam. These sessions enhance their understanding of Islamic principles, traditions, and practices, delving deep into the essence of Ramadan, the significance of the five pillars, and the rich tapestry of Muslim-American history. For juvenile detention centers, this marked a pioneering moment, the first of many instances in recent memory of a Muslim organization facilitating such workshops. For the attendees, it was more than just an educational experience, it was an opportunity to reflect on the virtues like forgiveness, hope, gratitude, vulnerability, while debunking prevailing misconceptions about their faith. The importance of such programs and their subsequent reporting cannot be stressed enough as they influence the allocation of resources for similar educational ventures. My personal commitment was evident when I celebrated Eid al-Fitr in April with incarcerated youth at Horizons. We are indebted to A.C. Thomas for granting us access, and it's imperative to commend Abdul Sankare, whose role as youth detention specialist at Horizons Juvenile Detention Center has been pivotal in forming connections and ensuring our nurturing atmosphere and extending educational support. Sorry. In tandem, we've conceived a new MOON initiative for forthcoming Ramadan, an endeavor reflecting the rejuvenation in alignment with our mission to uplift the young residents at Horizons. This is a program that we've started pitching to ACS as of this week. We are also optimistic that this program will catalyze significant positive transformations in line with MCN's core values. We trust that such initiatives will bolster ACS' efforts to encourage more youth of Islamic faith to embrace education and deter them from violent altercations. Also, the recent surge in the Middle East-linked violence, which resonated in local demonstrations and tensions, amplify the urgency for endeavors like Resolution 476, which MCN has pushed for since last year. It's been endorsed by 15 co-sponsors. The resolution aspires to instill religious diversity curriculum across all grade levels. And we believe that this resolution will have high impact within youth detention facilities for youth who are battling with their religious faith and who have been suffering religious discrimination within these facilities. In conclusion, we extend our heartfelt thanks to the council for hearing our testimony.
Thank you. You mentioned overcrowded reasons students are denied programming at Rikers. Are there any other reasons you've heard about?
Well, yeah, I mean, the biggest thing we hear and when I reach out to the school directly, to East River directly regarding students enrolling in school, the most common thing I hear back is they're not in a program unit. So we'll submit a request for educational services. But then the subsequent transfer into a program unit either takes a very long time to happen or doesn't happen at all.
What's the timeline to transfer into a program? Your clients, let's say one of your clients applied to transfer into a program, how long does it normally take?
I have not had a lot of success getting the transfer to ever happen. I have had clients who I've reached out several times about who have not been moved into program units ever.
Ever.
Correct. Since the transition to what seems like the model that DOC described earlier, additionally, I have not had success in having young people who are in non-program units go to school. I know DOC did indicate earlier that that was, that could happen. That has not been my experience. I have worked with many young people who are, you know, the longer they spend on one unit, they become more reluctant to transfer into a different unit if they feel relatively comfortable where they are. And so it would be great if students in that situation were able to go to school, but I have not seen that happen personally.
Ms. Bernard, in your testimony, you talked about a student that did not receive all of their IEP services. And earlier, you heard the administration testify and said that was not the case. Can you elaborate?
Sure. So we've seen multiple students that have been placed at both Crossroads and Horizons not receive any of the IEP mandated services. So earlier today, someone testified that an IEP is comparable to the SEP. However, we've heard from multiple parents that SEP or IEP mandated, like, services or that meeting never actually even takes place. And so there is a gap here in terms of what is being displayed, in terms of what is being testified and what we're witnessing from our clients day to day. in terms of what is being testified and what we're witnessing from our clients day to day.
Thank you. How many young people have you interacted and worked with in your Muslim project?
Yes. So, our recent visits during Ramadan, we interacted with three Muslim converts, and then we have somebody there, Abdul Sankare, who's also now, he's saying there's about eight Muslims in total. He says sometimes some of the lack of understanding of other peers leads to conflict over their faith. Some of them do wear kufis when they want to pray and certain things like that. So, I think definitely just more religious tolerance and understanding within the facility will kind of aid and help some of these other students feel more comfortable in these educational settings within the classrooms. We think that's going to be helpful and intentional.
That's why you think we should pass that resolution?
Yes.
And you would bring that into facilities for young people?
Yes. I mean, we think, because the resolution is for all DOE programs, so we're assuming that once the DOE knows how to implement this program within their curriculum, this will also be inside of juvenile detention facilities as well as part of programming.
The resolution is just a suggestion?
Just a suggestion, yes.
It's not a law binding, because as the education chair, I can't tell them, but I can suggest and probably work with our state departments to make it a reality.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you for all the work that you do.
Thank you so much to our first panel. Our next panel will just include Paulette Healy. Please make your way to the front, and if there is anybody else in the room who wishes to testify, please make sure to fill out a slip at the Sergeant-at-Arms desk. No problem. You may begin your testimony.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. My name is Paulette Healy, and I sit on the City White Council on District 75. I'm also a member of Parents for Responsible Equitable Safe Schools, or PRESS NYC, and I'm a parent of two students with disabilities attending New York City public schools. So, I spent the last two hours listening to directors and principals talk about ATS process, education plans, intentions, and the handling of our students while they're in their care and post-release. Entering a student into the system does not guarantee a provider has been assigned, and on average, it takes about a month for a child tagged as needing home instruction in a traditional sense, let alone as a part of a transition plan post-incarceration. Our students with disabilities are overrepresented in the population attending these alternate school settings. So, as we discuss the school-to-prison pipeline, we cannot ignore that our District 75 students, mainly with classifications of emotional disturbance or disabilities, are being steered down this pathway and feeding into our prison system. Of the 11,000 students that were given superintendent suspensions last year, 7,700 were restrained and were identified as students with disabilities. So, then what? A report by the federal attorney in Manhattan accused the Department of Corrections of failing to protect the constitutional rights of approximately 500 adolescent inmates who were subjected to, quote, "unnecessary and excessive force" from jail employees. Some of the worst abuses have taken place in the classrooms, hallways, and stairwells of the facility's school spaces where surveillance is lacking, according to the report. So, our students are on a continued pathway for behavior modification through excessive force, physical and mental harm, and fear. This is not reform. This is population control. So, what am I asking for? Under this particular administration, our chancellor has introduced amendments to Regulation A 412, which legislates what security and safety looks like in our schools. The suggested amendments increase NYPD presence, give more access to parent-designated spaces to school safety agents, and removes notification to parents and replaces direction to contact general counsel in an event of a crime instead of contacting the parent. These amendments are slated to be approved at the November PEP meeting on November 29th. My ask is for our members of City Council and this committee to join parent and community advocates in demanding that this chancellor does not violate parent and student rights when it comes to how we observe security in our schools. With locked doors, increased policing, sporadic metal detector searches, the perception of this chancellor is preparing our students for a future in prison instead of college. And we can't let that stand. The first line of defense when it comes to keeping our children safe are our parents. And if we circumvent this process, and, you know, we have this direction from this chancellor that the schools need to contact general counsel before they contact a parent when there is a crime happening in the school that concerns their children, not only is it a violation of student and parent rights, but it's also a civil rights violation. And we can't continue reinforcing this pathway to prison by conditioning our children to make this an acceptable environment. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony. We will now move on to our virtual panelists. Our first panel, Danielle Gerard, Crystal Baker Burr, and Melissa Andra. Danielle Gerard, you may begin your testimony.
Thank you. I'm just waiting to unmute. Thank you very much. Chairs and committee members, I'm Danielle Gerard, Senior Staff Attorney at Children's Rights. We advocate on behalf of young adults on Rikers and support councilmember Narcissus legislation. Social science and neurological research that guide best practices working with older youth show that adolescent development does not end at age 18. Young people continue to mature well into their mid-20s, making them uniquely vulnerable and impressionable. This is especially true for young adults in child welfare and criminal justice systems. These young people require supports that respond to their unique needs. During this critical period, the opportunity to interact with supportive adults and practice reasoning, decision-making, and self-regulating skills strengthens young people's ability to function in the years ahead. Youth have better outcomes if their unique needs are addressed, and they are not required to navigate systems created for older adults. The programming that will no longer be offered by qualified personnel on Rikers includes training in financial literacy, drug relapse prevention, and anger management. Removing access to these resources will have tangible negative impacts for both young adults and older adults on Rikers, more than 80% of whom have not been convicted of a crime and thus are more likely to return to their communities. This is especially true regarding educational programming. Packets are no substitute for quality education. For the hundreds of young adults on Rikers and those up to age 25, any available education is disrupted by violence. Attendance is severely hampered by the lack of escorts, which must not be dismissed as a challenge. It is the direct result of AWOL COBA members. On top of everything else, young adults are shackled to desks. Education is key to rehab and reentry. Our young people are not so much garbage to be tossed away. Young adults desperately need the tools provided on a consistent basis by qualified professionals to help them survive the months and sometimes years they spend in the hell that is Rikers. They need these tools to transition back to the community and improve their chances of stable and productive lives. We believe programming must be made available for all incarcerated youth, and furthermore, should not be used as a reward system. Education is a critical part of this programming. Programming and educational opportunities will benefit both the young adults on Rikers and their communities at large, as young people gain skills that will allow them to productively contribute to their communities and stay out of jail. Education, including vocational training, is an essential element of a foundation for true public safety, not the fear-mongering that passes for public safety policy these days. I refer you to my written testimony for more detail. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Crystal Baker Burr.
Thank you. My name is Crystal Baker Burr, and I'm the Director of the Education Defense Project at the Bronx Defenders. Thank you, Chairs Rita Joseph, Diana Ayala, Carlina Rivera, and members of the committees for the opportunity to present our testimony today. In my testimony, I will be sharing client stories. The name I use is a pseudonym. The experiences are very real. Manny's story illustrates a number of serious issues. There are disproportionate numbers of students arrested and detained from District 75 schools. I want to thank Jeanette Healy for demonstrating this disturbing pipeline in your testimony earlier. Unreasonable delays and denials in student enrollment at East River Academy. Thank you, Anna Arkin Gallagher, for your testimony earlier about that issue. And that students are inappropriately languished in detention and jails because of the lack of appropriate educational placements upon release. And students with disabilities have been denied a free and appropriate public education and the accompanying due process rights afforded such students. Thank you, Elizabeth Bernard, for testifying about that. We urge the council to take immediate action. We strongly believe that the reporting bill proposed as Intro 542 with additional advocate edits, as referred to in Elizabeth's testimony, is a part of necessary actions that must be taken to ensure access to education for all students in New York City. Manny is a student with an emotional disability. Manny attended JM Rapore High School, which is a District 75 high school in the Bronx. It serves students with emotional disabilities and other classifications. His attendance dropped while he was attending that school. He felt the school was unsafe because there were constant fights. When he was in class, he felt like the teachers had to focus on managing the classroom rather than engaging students. He stopped attending and never earned any credits from that high school. When Manny was first arrested, he was detained at Horizons. He attended Passages Academy. He earned some of his first credits. Then there was a fight on his unit, and the whole facility was locked down for three days. He missed instruction. He went to school two days that week, but found it was hard to remember some of the information he had learned the week prior. Then the facility was locked down again, and he didn't know why this time, but he missed a week of school. His education was constantly disrupted, which made it hard for him to build momentum and fully retain the knowledge he was learning. However, he did earn credits for the first time and felt really good about that. Manny was released from detention and was motivated to continue his education and build off the progress he had made. Unfortunately, Manny didn't have any supports when he was released. No transition counselors followed up with him. He wanted to transfer to a better school, but didn't know how to. His IEP said he had to be in a specialized District 75 school, and there weren't many options for him. The schools in his district wouldn't take him because of his IEP, and he felt stuck and he gave up. Then, he was arrested again.
Time expired.
But this time, he was older, and he went to Rikers. While incarcerated, Manny continually requested to be enrolled at East River Academy. Months went by, and Manny was never produced to the school floor to finalize his enrollment. Our office advocated for Manny to be enrolled at East River Academy, but his housing unit was never changed, and because of that, he was never offered access to his education. Unfortunately, Manny's mental, physical, and emotional health deteriorated while incarcerated. Manny was assaulted after a verbal dispute and was placed in enhanced security housing, ESH. While incarcerated at ESH, Manny had no opportunity to access even the minimum three hours a day of educational programming offered at program houses at RNDC. Our office was told that even students that have 12 months schooling as a service on their IEPs are not given access to education while at ESH. Our office was able to force an IEP meeting for Manny, and District 79 and 75 staff agreed to a non-public school placement as the appropriate placement on his IEP. Manny has waited for over five months for a non-public school placement to accept him. Manny has been rejected by every single residential special education school in New York State that he has applied to, over 17 of them. While his applications are pending, Manny is forced to remain incarcerated because the judge has said he will only release Manny out of Rikers to an appropriate educational setting. There should be other ways to meet his educational and support needs, especially since all parties have recognized that jail is not appropriate and that a residential specialized educational setting is what he truly needs. Denials of access to education for our young people that are incarcerated are not occurring in a vacuum. Many of the young people we work with are in need of greater educational supports and educational placements that truly meet their needs prior to any juvenile or criminal legal system involvement. An ACS DOE reporting bill should help us get useful data to make systemic changes for students prior to their arrest. We need to know where students are coming from, which specific schools. I know earlier Chair Joseph asked the question, you know, how many students are coming from D-75 placements? And that couldn't be answered at today's hearing. We need to know that information. We believe Intro 542's advocate edits that we have attached to our written testimony further this goal in that those edits should be adopted. The data collected should have a purpose and should be used to drive change. Finally, Rikers Island just needs to close. There is no redeeming it. There's been a reporting bill on the books for years. There's been an active class action since 1996, the Hanbury case. There have been monitors, but access to education has not gotten better, and real people are suffering because of it, on top of the trauma clients experience every day from the violence, abuse, and death that occurs there. Thank you for your time to offer this testimony.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Melissa Andra.
Hi, good afternoon. May I start?
Yes, you may begin.
I want to thank Chairperson Joseph, Chairperson Rivera, and Chairperson Ayala, as well as the Committees on Education, General Welfare, and Criminal Justice for holding this oversight hearing. I also want to thank the councilmember Narcissus and all the sponsors of Introduction 542 for introducing this important legislation to provide increased transparency and accountability for the DOE, ACS, and DOC toward vulnerable youth. We, along with the other advocates who have spoken today, support the passage of Introduction 542 with some recommendations for changes which were drafted with other advocates and which I will submit with our written testimony. Through the juvenile rights practice in our criminal defense project, the Legal Aid Society represents the majority of youth who are charged in New York City criminal and family courts. Hundreds of these young people are detained or incarcerated each year. We represent these young people both in their individual cases and through systemic advocacy. Young people are entitled to receive a free public education until they either graduate from high school or until the end of the school year when they turn 21 years old. However, as others have described, young people in New York City's detention facilities are frequently denied this right at the critical moment when an education could have the greatest impact on the future trajectory of their life. When high school-aged youth are denied the right to attend high school, pursue further education, or vocational training, we're limiting their future opportunities and condemning them to a future in which they will be unable to earn a living wage. Despite the fact that 27 years ago, the Legal Aid Society filed a class action against DOE and DOC about the education of youth housed at Rikers Island, we continue to hear stories from our clients about not being provided with appropriate educational services. There continue to be grave violations of these children's rights in DOC and now ACS facilities. Since raised the age 16 and 17-year-olds are now in ACS facilities. Our attorneys regularly speak with our clients at Rikers and at the secure and non-secure detention facilities run by ACS. We continue to hear complaints from our clients that they are prevented from attending school. Students in non-secure detention who are housed in a different location from those schools at Belmont and Bronx Hope Passages Academies are frequently transported late to school, causing them to miss morning classes or not transported at all. We also continue to hear reports that classrooms are being used as holding cells, a report that was denied today
Thank you. Your time is expired.
by DOE and DOC staff. Two weeks ago, we heard from a client that he was sleeping on a floor of the classroom with four other students, and when we inquired of ACS, we were told that that information was incorrect because he had been provided with a mattress, so he was not sleeping on the floor. Just last week, two of our attorneys went to ACS's Crossroads Facility and were forced to interview their client in the hallway. They asked for a private room to speak with their client and were denied, and the child reported to them that the private interview rooms are being used as sleeping spaces. This was confirmed when the attorney looking through the window to one of the rooms saw bedding stacked on a table. Passages stopped employing transition coordinators, now puts that responsibility for the smooth educational transition of children on counselors and social workers. Far from the seamless transition described by Ms. Esperance, we see more difficulties for youth attempting to return to their home schools or enroll in new programs. We have no information about whether these guidance counselors and social workers continue to track these youth to ensure a successful transition, but given the difficulties that our clients face in re-entering their communities, we don't believe that there is any. Earlier, we heard a great deal of information about higher educational offerings. Earlier, we heard a great deal of information about higher educational offerings, but ACS and the DOE should have to report on the number of youth who are actually able to participate in these programs. Um, last spring, I visited a program, and we asked the principal, how many students do you have that are actually doing college? And we were told that there was one at his location. In two thousand twenty-one, the superintendent that supervised Passages Academy, Tim Lasante at the time, reported to the Education Committee that sixty-five percent of the youth attending school in detention were identified as children with disabilities, but there is no currently, no current reporting about the special education services that are available to those children. There is a single, single school psychologist at Passages, um, who is assigned to four different Passages sites, and we have been told that the IEP reviews that are required by federal law do not regularly happen, which means some of those students who are re-entering the community are leaving without a current IEP. Education is the single factor that has the greatest potential to lift families out of poverty, and it's an essential element of rehabilitation. And we thank the council for your attention to the educational needs of young people in ACS and DOC custody, and we urge you to pass Introduction five fifty-four. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Um, has, earlier, um, the administration denied that, um, classrooms were being used for, for, um, cells to hold students. Um, what have your clients told you about that?
Um, yes, um, well, as I mentioned, two weeks ago, we had a client who complained he had been sleeping on the floor of a classroom. Um, ACS denied that that was true, although they, they kind of admitted it because they told us, no, he wasn't sleeping on the floor, he had a mattress. Um, they called it a Barker bed. You know, we, again, last week, two attorneys reported back that their client had told them that, you know, they were sleeping in the non, sleeping in, um, I guess the attorney interview room, um, at the facility. So it's, it's still occurring, and this is not, you know, despite ACS's, um, protestations, our clients continue to report that that is happening.
How long has it taken for your clients to attend class or attend some, some kind of educational programming?
Um, sure. At Passages Academy or at the, um, juvenile detention facilities, it is usually pretty quick. Um, the students at Rikers are certainly having a much more difficult time in accessing any kind of education at all. Um, we frequently hear from them, as other advocates have testified, that the students in the restrictive housing units are not permitted to attend school at all. Um, students that are not in the, um, designated educational units are not allowed to attend school. And although it was indicated earlier, um, that that is, I believe it was by Ms. Torres, that students in other units are permitted to attend school, that has not been the experience that our clients have reported to us. And I tend to believe when a young person, when, you know, teenagers can be school-resistant, and when a teenager is telling me, I want to go to school and they're not letting me, I'm inclined to believe them.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your testimony, and thank you to our virtual panelist. Um, just as a reminder, if you did not submit testimony, you may do so at council.nyc.gov/testify for written testimony. If there is anybody else on the Zoom who wishes to testify, please use the raised hand feature. No hands. That concludes our virtual testimony. Thank you.
And this concludes our hearing. Thank you.